The council?
The council?
Will come to order.
Will come to order.
All right, very good. Grace just called us to order. She's my guest mayor this evening. She's the daughter of councilmember Brock and her husband Tommy. And she's seven years old this Friday. And she goes to Pine Harbor School. You're in first grade, right? Thank you for helping us start the meeting tonight. Appreciate that. Okay. Looking at our agenda this evening, we'll call the roll. Let the roll reflect that all councilmembers are in attendance. And that a quorum has been established. Tonight, we're going to start with a proclamation, council, that we have before us regards to Minnesota Food Share. Is there someone here to represent? Okay, oh, great, oh, go ahead. Chris is here. We have a very important event coming up here in March. As the month of March is the citywide food fight for Minnesota Food Share and Hastings Family Service. Right, Chris?
That's correct.
And we have prepared a proclamation this evening to recognize that. And so I'm going to ask council, with councilman Revon, to start us off with that.
Whereas Minnesota Food Share has coordinated a March campaign for 36 years to restock food shelves around the state of Minnesota and?
Whereas one in 10 Minnesotans are food insecure and do not have access to adequate food on a regular basis and?
Whereas Hastings Family Service has provided help and hope and served the basic needs of our community since 1970 and?
Whereas 51 percent of our community members who visit Hastings Family Service food shelf indicate that someone in the household has skipped a meal because there was not enough food and?
Whereas the generosity of our community makes it possible for Hastings Family Service to provide and help and hope to our neighbors who lack food, housing, clothing, or transportation and?
Whereas all gifts of money and food throughout the month of March are proportionately matched by Minnesota Food Share and?
Now therefore be it?
Well, I call this mayor of the city of Hastings, the citywide food fight during the month of March, restock food shelves at Hastings Family Services by hunger. Thank you so much for once again coming out of the door and helping us and wanting to run the crisis. Please.
Leslie, thank you. Tim, Leslie has challenged again our police chief for the pie in the face challenge. They did that last year. I haven't heard if the police chief has accepted yet, so could you please encourage him? Last year, police chief, the police chief did win and raised more money and more pounds of food. Hastings Family Service really exemplifies what we are in this community. And this last year, there were 6,000, over 6,500 mouths that were fed through the food shelf at Hastings Family Service. And as we heard one of the councilmen say, 51 percent of the people who walk through our door every day report that someone in the household didn't eat. And so that's the number that always catches me off guard because you don't really see hunger when you look around in this room. You don't see hunger when you look around at the grocery store or in school. But unfortunately, there are people that are skipping meals or they're taking turns eating. Those are the stories we hear every day. So we're so grateful and we're so dependent on this community to continue to step up. And the month of March is just a great time to do that. So if you'd like to get involved, you can go to our website to find information, or you can give us a call. And we thank you so much for all your support and for making this a proclamation and a celebration of the citywide food fight. Thank you.
Thank you, Gracie. I appreciate your help this evening. You did a terrific job. Now I notice that the seat is way low, so I'm going to fix that. Ah, there, much better. Now I can see everybody. That's great. Okay, council, we have another presentation, the Arts Lab Cohort, thecreativeminnesota.org. And I don't know who's going to introduce that. Or, go ahead, Melanie. Yeah.
Well, and we have some guests here tonight, your honor and council. But in mid-2017, H-PAC participated in a study for, about arts and culture in Minnesota, and they invited the city of Hastings to be a partner with it. And councilmember Leifeld attended several of the meetings. The study has now been completed. And we do have Sheila Smith with creativemn.org here to give us the results of the study. So I would turn it over to our guests tonight. Thank you.
Dick, welcome to the meeting. We're very glad to have you here. And you're such a great occasion. Is this presentation? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hicks, members of the council. It's great to be here tonight. A little bit about the study and a little bit of the background. As Melanie mentioned, a few months ago, Hastings and H-PAC was invited to be a part of a 13-community joint learning experience. And these communities included Crookston and Grand Marais and Cannon Falls and Northfield and Red Wing and Eagan. So there's really a broad array of communities from across the state of Minnesota. The project, the Arts Lab Learning, really consisted of three parts. First part, there were four, and we've completed three of them, four weekend retreats where we came together with representatives. It was essential. We had to have people from city government and the Chamber of Commerce and the arts community came together and learned from each other. We even had a presentation for mayors, which is very interesting. We learned about, you know, just various perspectives on how the arts has developed. That was number one, the retreats. Number two is something that we call carried on cohort. It's to take that learning and bring it back to the community. And so beginning this summer, we will have, or maybe even sooner than that, some ongoing conversations. We've, H-PAC has engaged some pretty skilled facilitators to help us start to take us to the next level. And so that's, so it's going to take that learning from the labs, bring it back home. The third piece was the research. And Sheila Smith, who's the executive director of Minnesota Citizens for the Arts and chair of this particular study, managed to put together the money, which is from just about every foundation that's interested in the arts and public funding sources, to take a look at the economic impact that the arts have on the community. Now, there's a couple of things about this before Sheila comes up. Number one, this is pre-art space. So some of the figures that are missing is the $12 million or $13 million that came into the building. Also, what's missing is the $70,000 a year thereabouts that is generated in property tax each year from that building. And the Wax Act fees, which I think were a couple hundred thousand dollars. So all of that is not in this study. So it's pre-Hastings Riverloft's art space building. So the other thing about the study is that, and Sheila will tell us more, this is limited to the nonprofit sector. So there are some, when you look at these numbers, you know that there's also the art center, there's musicians in the bars, there's lots, there's the dance companies, there's lots more that can take this study even further. So anyway, I've said enough. H-PAC participated in this study. We contributed $1,500 to make this happen. And we're, we think it's probably some of the best money we've spent. So it's my pleasure to introduce Sheila Smith, who will walk us through the study. Thank you, Sheila.
Welcome, Sheila. We're very glad to have you here at the meeting.
Thank you so much. That was the cutest opening of a city council meeting I've ever seen.
Well, if somebody like Gracie up there, you can't miss, that's for sure.
Let's get this into slideshow mode. This mouse is misbehaving. There we go. From the beginning. There we go. All right. The Creative Minnesota Project is a collaborative venture between all of the statewide arts-supporting organizations and foundations from McKnight, Bush, Jerome Foundations, the Minnesota State Arts Board and Regional Arts Councils, the statewide service organizations such as Minnesota Citizens for the Arts that I work for, Springboard for the Arts that serves individual artists statewide, the Minnesota Theater Alliance, et cetera. It came to be because we had been complaining about the same thing, which that there wasn't good, hard data about the nonprofit arts and culture sector in Minnesota that we could use for policymaking and education and advocacy. So we got together to create Creative Minnesota. This year, this study I'm about to give you is part of the 2017 cohort. There was a 2015 cohort too. So now there's been two rounds of statewide studies, 11 regional studies. In 2015, there were 17 local studies. This round, there are 15 local studies. So the body of work is expanding a lot as we move through the state. We expect to be doing local studies every two years. And because by and large, this is the very first time most local governments, cities and counties have done studies of the economic impact of the arts in their geographic area, they are baseline studies, first time ever. And that's true for Hastings also. So let's begin. All of the studies that I've mentioned, 59 in the last two years, are available for free for download at creativemn.org. So if you're interested in digging into comparisons, looking at other places, that's the place to go, creativemn.org. First of all, I'm going to touch on artists and creative workers in the state. We found 104,000 Minnesotans making their living as artists and creative workers. That is in nonprofit settings, for-profit settings, and as individual entrepreneurs and small business owners. Who are the creative workers in Minnesota? We worked through federal data sets to identify 41 different occupations that are listed on the screen. Everything from architects to actors to singers, dancers, photographers, 41 occupations in total. And I'm going to kind of zip through things because I know you have a busy agenda. But I'm available for questions when we get done with the presentation. By far, the most common type of artist and creative worker is photographer. There's 16,000 in Minnesota. That surprised me at first, until I thought of all the different ways photography plays into our lives. Everything from wedding photography, online advertisements, TV and radio, all of those things involve photography. Second is singers and musicians, then writers and authors, and then graphic designers. We did a huge survey of individual artists in Minnesota, of which over 2,000 responded, which is a huge oversample of any survey you can imagine. We found that 24 percent of respondents are full-time in their creative occupation. About 40 percent are part-time in their creative occupation and then doing something else. For example, you may be mayor of Hastings and perhaps you are a singer on the side.
Why wouldn't I be doing that? But I get the point.
Or a city councilperson and a dancer. It's a very, very common thing to have, you know, an ordinary job, but then also a creative sideline. And then another third of the artists identified themselves as retired hobbyists or student, which means they're not making their living in the arts at all. But they are, I am a hobbyist, and I spend a good thousand dollars a year on art supplies. So they're having an economic impact, but they're not included in the numbers I'm about to go through. Part of the survey was asking artists and creative workers, what is the strongest need for you to make a living and a life in the arts in Minnesota? And by far, the most common response was space to work. Dancers, singers, and theater people need places to rehearse and places to reform, perform. Visual artists, jewelers, potters, all those kinds of people who are making things with their hands, they need dedicated studio space and a space to sell those objects. So you are ahead of the curve in having just completed an art space project in your community. You are meeting the number-one need of artists in Minnesota. So I thought that was pretty interesting about Hastings. And you are ahead of the pack in terms of all of the other communities that we studied in that respect.
Well, I tell you, that's a great thing to hear. And we're very proud of H-PAC and that organization because they're an advocacy group that helps us get there. So appreciate everything they've done.
It also helps to have very organized people.
That's right.
The second biggest need identified was connections. Artists want to connect with their communities. Our survey showed a very high level of volunteerism amongst individual artists, and not just volunteering as artists, but also volunteering in litter pickup and all kinds of, other kinds of volunteer activities. So having a community of near artist community can be a great resource in terms of volunteerism. Third thing is artists very much want to learn. The older artists who have spent their lifetime accumulating skills in a certain art form, they recognize that it's time to pass on those skills to the next generation. Younger artists are very hungry for learning opportunities. And so that's one of the things the funders took out of the responses was, we need to find many more ways to set up mentorships so that the skills can be transferred through the generations before they are lost. And then artists, like all other earners, want to earn more money and they want a bigger audience. No big surprise there. So you're unique in being split between two counties. So we looked at both Dakota and Washington counties. In those counties, we found nearly 11 and a half thousand artists and creative workers, which is a very large number compared to our other study areas, of which nearly 3,500 are full-time artists and nearly 7,000 are part-time artists. So a huge artist population very close by. In terms of density of creative workers in the workforce, it varies widely across the state. But I'd like to point out, Cook County, at the very tip of the arrowhead up there, has one of the highest densities of artists and creative workers in the state. They only have a population of 6,000 people in the Cook County. But they have a huge tourism service sector, which involves the Grand Marais Art Colony and the North House Folk School. They're drawing people up there to stay for four days, five days, a week at a time to take a class in an art form. These people are staying in hotels, they're eating in restaurants for every meal, they're shopping downtown. So thinking about how to draw people to your arts organizations and events for things that last a few days can really build up heads and beds and people spending money in restaurants, et cetera. Dakota and Washington counties together have an artist density of 31 artists per thousand workers, which is pretty high compared to the rest of the state. It's lower than Hennepin and Ramsey County, but it is amongst the highest across the state. In terms of average hourly wages for creative economy workers, by and large, if you're in a metro area, the creative worker wages are lower than the average worker wages. But in greater Minnesota, where there are lower wages in general in a lot of counties, the creative worker wages are higher. In Dakota and Washington counties, as you would probably expect, because you're so close to a metro, a big metro area, the artists and creative worker wages are slightly low, the average, lower than the average worker wage, but still very healthy compared to the rest of the state in terms of what artists and creative workers are earning. In the small rural counties, generally, the artists and creative worker wages are higher because then artist has a larger geographic area in terms of their, where they're drawing business from. If they are a jeweler or a painter, other kinds of creative artists, they can sell their work online, for example, at Etsy.com. And in that case, your market is not just national, but also possibly international. Somebody who's running a wedding band, they're not going to just do weddings in Hastings. They're going to be running around, you know, four or five counties to do their work. So that generally makes their wages a little bit higher than the average worker wage. Okay, shifting gears now. Arts and culture organizations in the state, we found over 1,600 nonprofit arts and culture organizations. So this is only the nonprofit sector. In the city of Hastings, we found 16 organizations participating in this study. Here's a list of the organizations that are included in the consideration for Hastings. And this is Hastings City proper, not including all the rest of the things going on in the counties. So we're very local in this part of the study. So the larger budgets in town are Art Space, Black Dirt Theater, Denmark Township Historical Society, Hastings Cable Community Access, and a couple more. And then in terms of what kinds of organizations there are in Hastings, your profile here in terms of having way more performing arts organizations than other types of organizations is the same profile as the state. Tends to have a lot more performing arts. That includes theater, dance, music, all nonprofits, of course. And then generally, you'll have one or two history or historical preservation organization in town, and that is also true of you. So this looks fairly typical. In terms of budget size, this curve is also typical of the statewide curve. You have many more organizations of under $25,000 a year, and then you get fewer as the budgets get bigger. What's interesting about the under $25,000 a year, very often, is an organization that's doing perhaps a festival one time a year. It's an all-volunteer effort. Then everybody skips town and goes to Florida for the winter, and then they come back and they do some other event in the summer. That's typical of that size. You are unusual, though, in having two larger organizations of budgets over $250,000 a year in the arts. Getting over $100,000 a year is considered, you've made it. You are a big budget, which I think is a little bit different than a for-profit enterprise. In terms of attendees, on a statewide basis, we found 22 million attendees annually served by these 1,601 nonprofit arts organizations, which is interesting because Minnesota only has 5 and 1/2 million people, roughly, which means, on average, all Minnesotans are attending nonprofit arts and culture events four times a year. In Hastings, you are approaching 50,000 attendees served annually collectively by your 16 nonprofit arts and culture organizations. That's a very healthy number for a community of your size. On a statewide basis, we have nearly 4 million K-12 students served annually by nonprofit arts and culture organizations in Minnesota. And here, just in Hastings, nearly 12,000 K-12 students are served by arts and culture experiences by your nonprofit arts and culture organizations, which is great. Also, there's only 900,000 K-12 kids in Minnesota. So the kids, like the adults, are, on average, getting four experiences from the arts every year. We did extensive surveying of audience members across Minnesota. We got about 6,000 responses. So again, a huge oversample. And on average, 43 percent of attendees have an annual household income of under $60,000 a year. That sounds like a lot, but the median income in Minnesota last year, I think, is $65,000 a year. And the reason I include this slide is there's often this canard that only rich people care about the arts and the arts only serve rich people. It's not true when you look at the data. The arts, nonprofit arts and culture organizations are serving the entire spectrum of the community. Why is attendee spending interesting? Well, attendee spending is interesting because in the metro region, attendees are spending about $27 and 1/2 dollars per person, per event, not including the cost of the ticket. And what are they spending money on? Well, imagine yourself going out to a play at night. You're probably going to go out to dinner first with your family, as I often do. Maybe you'll buy a souvenir or a pop at intermission. Maybe you'll have to buy gas on your way home. Maybe you hired a babysitter. Maybe you might go out with your friends for a drink after the show to talk about how much fun you had. All of these little economic interactions with town are interactions that wouldn't have happened if the family stayed home on the couch and watched The Voice. So arts and culture events are great for getting people up out of their house and out into the community and spending money. It's exactly what you want to happen. In this region, about 14 percent of the attendees are non-local. And non-local means not just not from this community, not just not from the counties next to you, but not from the seven-county metro region. And that's important because those guys are almost definitely staying in hotels. So that means the non-local attendees are spending 80 percent more than the local attendees. It's very attractive to think about, how can we draw more non-local attendees to the events in town? People tend to market only very close by. So thinking about how to market beyond the city or county borders to bring in more people to your events. I saw an economic development presentation in Fergus Falls that talked about how far greater Minnesota people are willing to drive for entertainment, and they're willing to drive for two hours. So thinking about, well, what's a two-hour circle around Hastings? How can we talk to those folks about the fun stuff that's going on here and bring them to town to spend money is a worthy conversation. So on a statewide basis, we found the arts have an economic impact of $2 billion annually, which is quite a bit more than previous to when the legislature passed the legacy amendment, and the legacy amendment was passed by the voters in 2009. This makes Minnesota the epicenter of arts and culture in the Midwest. Although Minnesota and Wisconsin have roughly the same population, Minnesota has double the arts economy of Wisconsin. Just think of that. When I drove, drive over to Wisconsin, they're pretty much the same as us in pretty much most ways. Except for the people that don't like the Packers. The Packers always come into this conversation.
I think they drink more beer, too.
But the arts are something that really set us apart from other states in the Midwest. So we're double the arts economy of Wisconsin, 10 and 1/2 times the arts economy of Kansas, 12 and 1/2 times the arts economy of South Dakota. So if you're a young creative person and you want a job in a creative industry, you want to have an interesting creative life, you're loading up your crappy car and you're driving to Minnesota because this is where all the cool jobs are. And I think that's a really great thing for Minnesota, to be attracting young, creative people. And I hear stories from people every day, I moved to Minnesota because of your reputation of a great place to be an artist. If you look in the bigger study that was provided, there's a whole page there where young people were surveyed about, is where you live a good place to be an artist? If they were graduates from arts colleges. And Minnesota came up amongst the top. So I think it's good for our future. So on a statewide basis, what is that $2 billion? It's 819 million in organization spending with no multipliers. It's just adding up all the budgets. What are they spending in this community? On their electric bill, on stuff at the hardware store, whatever it is that they need to keep the thing going, that's being spent locally. 564 million from that audience spending that we've learned from the audience surveys. And then 644 million in artists and creative worker spending on things such as studio rental, again, stuff at the hardware store seems very popular when we survey artists on where they're spending money, but also on cars and vans to get their work to art fairs, all kinds of things. 644 million on a statewide basis. So what does that mean for Hastings? Your 16 organizations collectively are spending $1 million in town. The audiences they are drawing are spending $1.3 million in town for a total of $2.3 million just from the organizations and their audiences. And then to this, we can add a portion of the additional 43 million in economic impact generated by the spending of artists and creative workers in Dakota and Washington counties. But we'd have to figure out what portion of that belongs in Hastings. That's hard to do because that data set is only available by county level. But what we can calculate is the state and local government revenue from the spending of the organizations and their audiences is $257,750 annually in the city of Hastings, plus an additional portion of the $5 million in state and local government revenues generated by the spending of artists in your associated counties. And that is all kinds of state and local government revenues, all the different ways that governments collect money, tax revenue, property tax, income tax, license fees, utility fees, filing fees, et cetera. And we are, we're coming into the end. Finally, we have a few public opinion polls, statewide and national. Minnesotans place a very high value on creativity, believing that people who create arts are contributing something important to the communities in which they live. 90 percent believe the arts and culture helped to make Minnesota an attractive place to live and work. We already talked about artists volunteering more in their communities, so I'm going to skip right by that. Finally, Minnesotans attend arts and culture events more often than other Americans. 76 percent of Minnesotans say they attended an arts and culture event, whereas 68 percent of Americans did. And then finally, Minnesotans are more personally involved in creative activities in their daily lives than other Americans. That is, Minnesotans are singers, dancers, painters, photographers, writers, et cetera. 63 percent reporting that. 49 percent of Americans reporting the same. So finally, all of this information is available at creativemn.org, available for free. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have some.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation. Appreciate that very much. Great information. Council, is there some questions or comments? Questions or comments, council? Councilmember Bolsonak?
Yes, thank you, your honor. I'm one of those hobbyist artists at this stage of the game. I have been an artist my whole life. Scene designer, costumes, light sets and so forth, working all over the Twin Cities and different parts of the Midwest. And I ended up creating a company that, you know, focused directly on that. And it was, it was very easy. It was just so much fun to do that. And at this stage in my life, I'm now down to working at a one-inch scale, one inch equals a foot. I'm building dollhouses. I'm building dollhouses on the high end. And it's, it, it truly is amazing because what I specialize in, and this is not an advertisement, folks, believe me, I've got, I've got plenty of work to do. But the restorations that I do, nobody else in the Midwest does them because I've had people bring them to me to restore from Chicago, from St. Louis, you know, just all over. And it, it, you know, if I was living in Atlanta, I'm not so sure how successful it would be. I, I just don't know. I, I do know when I would teach my theater classes, statistically, we are second only to New York City in the amount of live entertainment and in particular theater, theatrical productions.
That was in our study.
Yes, yes. And it, it's truly, it truly is heartening. We are very fortunate in, in this state to have that kind of a glowing artistic quality that, that is always out there. I did note, early on, you said, you know, what's the biggest concern that, that artists have? And it's, you know, a space to work, someplace to work. And, you know, this is what I've found, you know, personally, in terms of some of the things that I've done. I, I don't know what the answer is to that. You know, we have auditoriums, we have, you know, we have shops in our school systems and things like that. We did lose a very creative concept with Breakaway Arts Center. And I'm hoping that they might be able to restructure and get themselves back into gear at, at some particular point. But I, I sit back here and I just glow when I see all of these statistics. And personally, I'm, I'm just very proud to be an artist in the state of Minnesota. Thank you, your honor.
You're welcome. Counsel, councilmember Brox?
Thank you. This is really valuable information, and I know what you're measuring here is just the economic benefit. We haven't even talked about the other benefits. I mean, the one that I saw, particularly when I was involved with Black Dirt Theater for many years, was the community building, which I think is something that a city is very interested in. How to connect people of different backgrounds, different ages, different generations to each other. I think that's really what art does best, more than anything else. So I just wanted to say, this is awesome, and this is only the tip of the iceberg. There's many other benefits that we didn't even talk about, but I think it's helpful to have this information so that when we come up with projects and ideas and there's presentations made to us, we can have this in front of us to look at it and prove the benefit. So thank you for being here. Thank you.
Councilmember Liefel?
Thank you, your honor. I would absolutely agree. So much that we didn't get to talk about tonight. Sheila, thanks for the data. H-PAC, your vision and drive to bring arts and culture and continue that movement in Hastings is amazing. And I have learned so much just having attended these events with you guys. But I feel that the average person, myself absolutely being that average person, I'm not an artist, I didn't realize the economic benefit. It is astonishing, amazing, the money that, that is there. And it's there in our city. And I just think what you're doing is, is amazing. And this information, we're going to be able to really hang on to and for people to look and there, when we do know there are people, look at the numbers. Not everybody's into arts. But everybody wants a healthy, strong, vibrant community. And this is absolutely one way to achieve that. So thank you guys for your dedication and your vision. Really appreciate it.
Any further comments? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, your honor. I was wondering, what were the next steps then with the H-PAC? Are you going to be looking at, how do you put together like recommendations for our communities so that you can help guide us? Because I, I admit, I'm not an artist either, so I wish I was, but I'm not. And so I, I look to your group to help provide some guidance in that area.
The four retreats that we participated in, there was a lot of learning from other communities. And if there was an overall direction that can be pointed to, it was creating a chapter in the community's comprehensive plan for arts and culture. Now, I know, you know, communities are at different times, at different places on their schedule, but that, that seemed to be the goal. And the fact that we, it was necessary for us to include the business community and government in these retreats, that is the direction that we see, is that creating not something for H-PAC, but if H-PAC can play a role in developing some vision for the community and being able to build, what you're saying is how do we work together to make something happen? So our plan, and it's going to start after an annual meeting in April, is we have some professional help coming to H-PAC, actually Rob and Gillette and Jeff Larson, who are both former directors of the Fringe Film Festival. They've really been around. They're going to help us put together a group that's going to move forward. And, you know, it's, it's, it's the board, but also we're inviting people from the community to help move in that direction. So that's, that's what we see as our next step in this. I think, you know, this is a great conversation. And if this adds to when you talk about what's going to happen on Vermillion or what's going to happen downtown and, you know, I think, I think that's, that's very exciting. So our, but our, our, our next step is to keep the conversation going. Good, okay, thank you.
Well, I know that the comprehensive plan is not due until December of this year. The 2040 comprehensive plan is not due until 2040, you know, until December of this year. So I think we certainly have plenty of time to consider putting in a, you know, be able to put in a, a, a
Well, we'll, we'll
Chapter on Culture and the Arts or, you know, get that somehow incorporated in the plan.
That's terrific. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, counsel? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that presentation, very valuable information. Hastings continues to turn the page. When it comes to quality of life issues, this is another big one, and we appreciate more knowledge that we got tonight. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, counsel, we have the minutes before us from the February 5th city council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. We have council items to be considered. We have one item to be considered. Counselor?
Thank you, mayor and counsel. You should have before you a copy of an email sent, I sent out late this afternoon with a council member, or memo, asking that you add one item to the agenda related to the Great Rivers Landing Platte and the Confluence Development. If you are willing to accept that onto the agenda, I'd propose that it be added to the administration section at the end of the agenda. Thank you.
Counsel, if there's no objection, we'll place that at C1, under administration, item number one. All right, let's go to consent agenda, counsel. Consent agenda, what's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve, seconded by councilmember Foltz. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to a public hearing, the 2018 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvements Program, under awarding of contracts to public hearing. Ryan, very glad to have you here. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, Mary, mayor. A little bit different than the arts that you just heard, we're going to move on to engineering portion of our meeting, I suppose. Tonight, we're specifically here to talk about the proposed project scope and features of the 2018 neighborhood project. I'll go through a presentation, answer any questions the council may have, and then turn it back to the mayor to conduct the public hearing. So the project area is essentially year two of a two-phase project. The project was so large in size that we did need to split it up over two years, so we're coming into our second year. The streets and alleys in black on the map are what we completed in 2017, and then the orange is what we're proposing here in 2018. And I'll go through the specific improvements along those streets and alleys. But first, starting out a little bit, the conditions we have out there, why we're talking about this neighborhood, is if you can see in the photo up here on Sixth Street, we have alligator cracking throughout the streets. It's a pretty common theme in this neighborhood. The concern as pavement engineers, what we see there is, we can't fix this with a mill and overlay. It's a more significant fix. We got to get at the, the base of the street and reconstruct it from the bottom up. Here's a shot on Seventh Street. You'll see our curb condition, no gutter, just a curb edge. Our snowplows are hitting that and knocking pieces out. The curb is in, in need of repair. Also pictured in the boulevard here, you'll see a hydrant, some of our water main in this location is over 100 years old. So this photo, it's a little shadowed here, but here's a sidewalk segment. You can see it's constructed in panels with grass growing through it. Tough to get a stroller or a rollerblader through that segment. Also, no ADA facilities or pet ramps to let all-abled pedestrians access those facilities. Getting a little dark here, but grab this picture on Eighth Street. This is actually a bituminous curb that's cracked up and brittle and starting to fall apart as well. Out in front of Ninth Street here, we have more, this is actually in front of Our Savior's Church, which is our, our city street. We do have more of the alligator distress with the failing base, and then we have some pothole fixes that we continue to throw patch dollars at on these types of road segments. Walnut Street is one of our north cell streets in this neighborhood. It's actually got modern curb and gutter, which, as you'll see later in the proposed improvements, we're, we're looking to keep in place. The pavement is starting to get cracked up and, and brittle. Most importantly on this segment, we are removing this portion to actually complete a water main loop for the west end of this neighborhood. So that'll give better service to our water customers. Forest Street, the existing conditions kind of speak for themselves. Again, more of the alligator cracking that's actually pot, popping out, creating pot, early signs of a pothole. We've got more of the broken up curb and water standing along the edge of the road. We have alleys in this neighborhood as well, so we're trying to get those alleys completed at the same time that we're doing the street improvements to get some economies of scale. You can see we have gravel alleys, and at the interface between the alley and the street, we have potholes forming as well. Here's another gravel alley segment with poor drainage. Water kind of just sits and saturates in these alleys and isn't conveyed away, creating soft spots and ruts when, whenever your vehicle traffic goes through. So, the goals of the project, number one is to reconstruct the pavement out there that is, is noticeably beyond its useful life. So that's really why we're talking about this neighborhood. That's what brought us here first, is to manage our pavement system. When we're replacing that pavement, we're also looking to upgrade the curb edges to modernize concrete curb and gutter to efficiently convey the water off of our streets. Also, looking at the sidewalk system, replace those to a standardized five-foot width. Also, to upgrade those facilities to ADA compliance. Now, when we're in there ripping up the streets and, and within the neighborhood, it's our opportunity to also address our aging infrastructure. So what we have here is a replacement of the water main system. This is a shot from last year where we're actually removing the existing six-inch or undersized water main pipes and proposing to put a larger size eight-inch plastic pipe in its place. We also have sewer lining and replacement. We line sewers where we can, but if the sewers are undersized, then we have to do full replacement. You see here, there, here's a shot of the liner and the picture on the left. That liner gets pulled through our sewer system, cured in place with steam, and you can see it vented out the downstream manhole. Full service replacement is also a feature in, in this project. We do this to completely replace the, the services from the main out to the property line in front of the homes. Typically, that's a resident responsibility, but in our street reconstruction projects, we want to get those service lines completely repaired so we're not putting new pavement down and having to dig those areas up in the near future. And that's for both water and sewer services. Also, again, with the wa, the road being dug up, we have the opportunity to extend storm sewer and make drainage improvements to our streets so we can extend pipes and catch basins to areas that previously didn't drain. We can also upsize those storm pipes to create larger capacity for, for bigger rain events. And we found that it's really one of the keys to extending the, the life of a new street is taking care of your drainage, getting that water away from saturating into your base layers and going through a significant freeze thaw activity. So, these are all the improvements we're proposing in this package. One of the things we're also looking to do is to preserve the character of the neighborhood once we're out of there. So that's, we take that to heart. Here's an adjacent neighborhood, actually at the east end of Seventh Street, where we are looking to keep the street widths about the same or even narrow them so that our boulevards get fully restored. And then also a big component of that is preserving the mature trees along and in, within the boulevards. So, I've actually asked Chris Jenkins, our parks director, to come talk a little about, about, we work very closely with our parks department when we're assessing trees and dealing with trees. So I wanted him to kind of give a little background on that program.
Welcome across to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Happy to be here. As, as Ryan mentioned, wanted to talk a little bit about boulevard trees and discuss with council where we've been lately with boulevard trees. And typically, a boulevard tree is planted within 10 feet of the curb. That's in the public right-of-way, right-of-way space. And in the city of Hastings, while those trees remain the property and responsible, well, property of the city of Hastings, the maintenance responsibility is that of the property owners. And that's, that's the way it is here in Hastings with our city ordinances. And part of that proper, that maintenance includes pruning, routine care, and preventative maintenance to include insecticide or fungicide treatments. The picture there is a, a stock photo of a gentleman using a treatment system for, it's a trunk injection system, and that can be done for both fungicide and insecticide. It's what, what we use in the parks for treating for Emerald Ash Borer as well. And as Ryan mentioned, preserving the character of a neighborhood is one of the major, major goals that we have with the need to maintaining and, and preserving those boulevard trees. You can see, that's the same street pictured on the left and the right. Once very mature, beautiful trees, providing lots of shade and economic benefits to residents, and then no trees. So, that's why we do the, the maintenance program here in Hastings. A couple of items in ordinance and policy. We're only going to remove a tree in a construction project if it is in direct conflict with the project itself, if it has to come out. Or if there, if that leaves the tree in any sort of unsafe condition. If you have to make a cut on multiple sides of the trees and damage too much root mass, then that tree is likely going to die, so it would need to be removed. The other part of that would be hazardous or diseased trees. And again, the city forester will go out through the project area and evaluate all those trees prior to the project kickoff and make sure that they're in good condition. Yeah, so some trimming can be done with that. And we can also talk to homeowners at that time, too, and prescribe, prescribe treatment, make sure they know about the Emerald Ash Borer Treatment Program that the, the city has worked through and/or get them in touch with other professional arborists that can help them deal with whatever tree it is they have. It's not just ash trees on our boulevards here in Hastings. We have a variety of species. Healthy trees cannot be removed out of the boulevard unless authorized by the city, and that would be the city forester's decision at that point. And those are all going to be based on very unique situations. It's a case-by-case basis. We don't do it for aesthetic or personal reasons. If, if a property owner moves into a new home and they don't like that tree, I'm very sorry, that's, that's the tree, it's in the boulevard, and the city retains the right to make sure that that tree stays there. If removal is authorized, the property owner is then obligated to plant, replant a new tree in that boulevard space at their sole expense. If removal is authorized, the property owner is then obligated to plant, replant a new tree in that boulevard space at their sole expense. And again, with the exception of removal by the city during the, an, infrastructure project. Just wanted to provide some reminders and, and context for boulevard trees here in Hastings.
Thanks, Chris. Then moving into a little more specifics of the improvements themselves, starting out at Sixth Street. The segment from, from Pine to Maple is really the last segment of Sixth Street we didn't get to last year. So we've got the same thirty-foot width proposed to match in with our improvements from last year. One thing you'll see changing throughout is the sidewalk. Sometimes it's on one side and are both sides or neither. We're, we're replacing the sidewalk as, you know, as it currently exists today. So... Here you'll see sidewalk on Sixth Street, just on the north side of the road. Moving to Seventh Street, that's same thirty-foot width from curb to curb with the sidewalk actually on the south side of the road out to Forest Street, and then from Forest to Spring sidewalk on both sides of the road. On A Street, you'll see our first segment where we don't have sidewalk on any side of the road. And when we met with the Operations Committee in early December, we talked about this a little bit and the Ops Committee asked us to go to our public open house meeting later in December, that December of 2017, and ask the residents with these inconsistencies in sidewalk locations, was there a desire to have some connectivity or consistency throughout the neighborhood? And overwhelmingly, our response from those folks that attended, and we got nearly thirty percent of people attending our open house, that if they had the sidewalk in front of their home, they wanted it replaced. They, they valued it and don't take my sidewalk away. If they did not have a sidewalk in front of their, their place, they did not necessarily want a sidewalk to be extended in front of their property due to the impacts that, that come with it. Then picking up on A Street from Forest, out to Spring Street, we have sidewalk again on both sides of the street. On Ninth Street, this is a, a pretty wide segment. This is out in front of Our Savior's Church. What we have proposed in this location is the same thirty-foot width, but what we're putting there is, is valley gutters thirty feet apart to kind of delineate that road lane or driving lane. We would maintain the parking both on the north side and the south side, so that the church doesn't lose any parking spaces. The other thing the valley gutter does as well is it shortens the distance that water needs to travel over our pavements to carry that all to our storm water system. Moving to the east then, past Ashland, we have a thirty-foot segment with no sidewalk on either side. Here's a look at that parking bump out. Actually, this is at St. John's Church where we did it. The difference here would be we'd have that bump out parking on both the north and south sides. Forest Street is our first north-south street. This is being improved from Seventh to A Street. We're actually proposing to narrow this street segment from thirty feet to twenty-four feet. That matches north of Seventh Street, what we reconstructed last year at twenty-four feet in width. We do see a lower density in driveways along this portion. Most driveways are on the east-west streets in this neighborhood. So we haven't witnessed as much on-street parking demand as, as the other streets. We also, by narrowing the road, we tend to see a traffic calming effect. By being a little more confined in space, speeds tend to lower. One benefit with still keeping the same functionality of the road, we have a, a long-term cost impact or, or savings to the city by having less snow and ice to remove and put down and also less pavement to maintain. So here you see that section view of Forest Street at twenty-four foot width with no sidewalks on either side. And Walnut, Walnut Street, we have actually thirty-six foot width roads. This is our widest segment of road. We have those good curb and gutter segments in place, so really the purpose for leaving that width is to salvage the good curb that we do have out there. And again, just, just remove the pavement surface, put our water main loop in and connect that for that segment. So in addition to the street segments, we also have alley improvements. The alley improvements include full base and pavement reconstruction in the alleys along with curb and gutter. The difference with this curb and gutter, it's a drive-over curb and gutter with the, with the wide alley access and multiple driveways. We found that's the best use of, of curb is to make sure we can convey water but still have them drive over. And our alleyways do take garbage trucks and, and large vehicles, so that's why they're designed to the similar streets sec, section as well. So, all these improvements have a total project cost of about two-point-nine million dollars. And in order to fund that total project cost, we've broken it down into categories you see here. We have about a million dollars in bonded debt that pays for the street storm sewer and restoration costs. We have about eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars that comes from the water fund. Four-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, which comes from the sewer fund, and then about five-hundred-and-seventy thousand, which would be private property assessments. To look at it a different way, for every, every dollar we have on the projects, about eighty percent or eighty cents of that is public funding, while as about twenty percent is private property assessments. On the assessments, that actually will be discussed at a separate public hearing scheduled for March fifth. That's the next council meeting. We'll go into more depth on the assessments and statements of the proposed assessment amounts were actually mailed out at the end of last week to each benefiting property owner. So that brings us to our project timeline. We're actually about a month earlier this year than last year for the bidding environment. That's a good improvement for us. Tonight, we're here to conduct our public hearing and look for council direction on the project. And March fifth, as I just stated, that's our assessment hearing. Our bidding process would incur, occur in the month of March, bringing contract award on April sixteenth, allowing us to get to construction potentially in May and concluding the project by September. Last slide here is just a little bit on our, our project communications campaign. We take this to heart. We put a lot of effort in this. We do have, and we commit to weekly construction updates where we talk about what occurred that week and what will occur the, the next week. There's several ways to get this information. We select a centralized location mailbox that we put hard copies in every week. We also have email and text message subscriptions that a lot of the residents have actually already signed up for. But we'll continue to encourage that where they get direct links to those updates when they're available. And then when we have critical activities like concrete in front of your driveway curing, we want you to stay off that for seven days to allow the concrete to cure properly. So we'll do a door-to-door stop-in and/or leave a, a flyer at, at the front door. We also keep our city website up to date, and for major issues or, or, or points, we, you may see updates of our project on the Facebook page as well. We can encourage enough, if you have questions, comments, please contact the city staff. Our number's available on the website and on this presentation. Also look for us out in the field. We're in the city vehicles. And then one thing that we've been doing, put a lot of emphasis on is our post-construction survey as well. We want to hear from the residents after they've just experienced the project, questions, comments. We do take those in. We do follow up on those and then constant and continual improvement. If there are constructive feedback items, we, we look at that, incorporate that into our next-year project as well. So, with that, I'll turn it back for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Appreciate that. This, this is an opportunity now for the public hearing, so I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time. Does anyone here would like to speak to the 2018 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvement Program? Anyone here to speak to the 2018 Improvement Program? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, let's dispose of this issue. Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ryan, thank you. Chris, well, I appreciate that you went and, and asked everybody about the sidewalks and, and gathered the data about that, and it was good to, to see their feedback. I guess we, we're not going to do a project like this in these streets every five years. You know, it's going to be what? Few decades or whatever before the next time. So we're making a very permanent stamp. And I know you know my, my thoughts when we had a committee media, committee meeting on sidewalks. I feel like it maybe needs a little bit deeper investigation, just because as much as a majority of the people in, in that area, in that neighborhood felt a certain way, this is a, a link to other neighborhoods as well, and it's a, it's an asset for the entire community, not just the, the people that are directly in front of those properties. So, you know, it's a connected walkable neighborhood that we're looking for, or, you know, that we're striving towards when we connect these things. So it's not just one segment and then no walkable area and then one that is and so forth. So just trying to think down the road, you know, no pun intended, but down the road, how, how that might negatively impact us and, and we might have to go back into these neighborhoods and add sidewalks. So I'd like to know a little bit more about that, have, have a little bit more investigation. I don't know exactly what that looks like or, you know, I'm not telling you what to do necessarily, but I'm not comfortable with signing off on something without sidewalks anywhere on either side at this point, especially if we're going to potentially narrow the roads and give more room for the boulevards. I think that just lends itself to have a possible sidewalk.
Councilmember Liefeld.
Trevor read my mind. Our Operations Committee, when we talked about this, I, I had asked the question regarding the unusual patterns to our sidewalks. South side, north side, no sidewalk, north side, not south side. It just, you know, so if you are walking your family. So I had asked, and I appreciate your reaching out to the community, to that neighborhood and asking what they really wanted there. I guess I was not leaning towards the option that, no, there is no sidewalk. I, I guess in our meetings, I was under the understanding that there would be a sidewalk, but we wouldn't do, do with the, you know, have the same, you know, we wouldn't change them. They wouldn't all be north side. They wouldn't all be south side, whatever. So I'm going to agree with what Trevor's saying and that, that in and of itself, when we're shortening and it, was it thirty to twenty-four or thirty-six to twenty-four in that section of Forest at A Street there?
Thirty to twenty-four.
Thirty to twenty-four. So I would like to see what it would take to look at putting sidewalk in a section of neighborhood where there isn't one. You know, that, that is something I would also like to see. What does that look like? What would, you know, what would that take?
I'll just add to that. We did look at that on those segments that didn't have any, specifically A Street, that portion on the far west side. The challenge is, is with the grades that we have out there, it would require some retaining wall of significant, you know, three, four-foot high standards to be placed in front of somebody's property, their entire property length. That would be on one side. Looking at it on, that'd be on the north side. Looking at it on the south side, we have some mature tree clusters that we can shift the sidewalk a little bit, but no matter any way you shake it, we can't get it through without taking several mature trees down. So, that, we did look at that. I, I think we have some costs with that too. I didn't bring those here tonight, but just hearing from the residents and, and knowing that those are pretty significant impacts for those areas that have no sidewalk, we had some concerns with, with carrying that forward. So... That's where staff said, doesn't mean we can't look at that more specifically if that's your wish.
Further discussion or, okay? Any further discussion? Councilmember Balsanik?
Well, I, just to add to what our other two council members have said. I, I'm, I'm a big believer in sidewalks. I think they help create a sense of community. I, I think they help to tie together a neighborhood. They encourage, you know, the movement back and forth and, and neighborhood camaraderie and so forth. So I would just add to what's been said that if we can put some sidewalks in, and, and I, and, I mean, you, you do raise a very good point about topography and, and of course trees, you know, the old Chinese proverb, when's the best time to plant a tree? Twenty years ago. What's the next best time tomorrow, you know? So we, we don't want to lose any trees if, if we can help it. But if we can do some sidewalks and maintain the continuity, so that they're going along. I, I specifically, let's see, you are planting sidewalks on both sides of Seventh Street going down to Maple? Or, or do we reach a point where they're only on one side?
So that's what Seventh Street looks like. Sidewalk on the south side from Maple to Forest, and then from Forest to Spring sidewalk on both sides. So that will have a sidewalk from one side of the project to the other.
Okay, to Forest. Okay, and then from Forest to Spring, we've got it on both sides. So at least, I guess at the very least, if we could get a sidewalk, not necessarily one on both sides, but if we could maintain a sidewalk, so that we've got the continuity. It, it would be going from Vermilion then, west all the way down to Maple. And, and I think we've got that now, right, with what you're saying? There's no place along Seventh where there would be no sidewalk. We'd have it at least on one side. And in some cases, two sides. The, so it's Eighth Street?
Yes.
It's Eighth Street between Spring? Where are we?
Between Maple and Forest, there's
Between Maple and Forest.
Not a sidewalk on either side currently.
Okay. Yeah, if there's, if there's some way that, you know, we might be able to do it, that, that would certainly be appreciated by me. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'm more worried about the tree and the expense that we're going to put on, and I look at the top, looking down at it. I could see why they, there's not a whole lot of households in there compared. I'm glad to hear that there's an extension all the way through Seventh. I think people will find the way that's got the extension of sidewalk the whole way. But I know I've heard from some residents that they don't want the sidewalk because they have to maintain the sidewalk. And now if we have a retaining wall, do they have to maintain that? Is that their cost? I see that side of it, the expense, and I see that there's less housing in this area, and I'm comfortable with the Seventh Street. So I'm saying I would not advocate to put a sidewalk in this area just for pure expense. I don't want to lose any trees.
I, I'll chime in and suggest that, you know, whenever you put in sidewalks in, they haven't been there before, it's very problematic. We've done this before in other projects, and tonight we had a public hearing, and not one person here commented. That's significant to me because there is a numerous, well, there's a large majority of people who agree in the second ward about how this project is going forward. They've had an opportunity to comment whether or not they want a sidewalk or not have a sidewalk. The people who have a sidewalk, they see in this plan that they're, they're getting, they're, they're maintaining their sidewalk. There's no extension of proposals of, of sidewalk. Ryan, last, last year's project on Ashland Street, was there a sidewalk put in Ashland Street?
Correct. To be consistent with our comprehensive plan, they called for a north-south sidewalk connection throughout the neighborhood, and we did get that done along Ashland.
And I, and I recall the discussion, when we, when we did that on Ashland Street, it was to provide that connectivity through the neighborhood to get to roadside park and, and, and the like. You know, with the existing sidewalks that are already there on Seventh that Councilmember Balsanik talked about, and it does go to Ashland and things. I think I would be very, I would be very weary if the council would all of a sudden make a decision to put in sidewalks at this juncture when the neighborhood has had an opportunity to weigh in on this and our agreement with the plan. and our agreement with the plan. I will guarantee you that if we do change it, the next time we have a public hearing, at the next, I think we'll hear some comment. So, I would just, and the expense as well is something I'm concerned about, too. But I really weigh in on what the neighborhood has to say on this issue, and I think that they've had the opportunity to express that. Councilmember Brox?
Thank you for saying that. And this is not my ward that I represent, but I do represent the city of Hastings. And I think the only concern I have is there is extra traffic when there's football games that pushes into this neighborhood. So, I guess my opinion is that there is a lot of extra traffic in the fall, and maybe that doesn't rise to the level of needing to put in sidewalks. But I think that is a consideration because there's a lot of young people that are walking around, and there's a lot of cars, and this area gets really congested around football games. So, maybe if we're not going to consider sidewalks, if we are, we still should consider the safety of this neighborhood and how we can make it safest for people who are coming from out of town and attending football games and are in this area. That's just my two cents.
Councilmember Liefeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ryan, you made a comment that there weren't a number of houses, as many houses in this section were. So, this is a two-block section, Forest to Walnut, Walnut to Maple, right?
On A Street.
Yep, A Street, okay. So, how many houses are we dealing with? And do you, I don't have the map in front of me, Mayor?
Maybe ten?
Sixteen homes or so?
Fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen, sixteen.
Yeah, it's two blocks worth.
And any idea of those sixteen, because you had, what, a thirty percent turnout?
Correct.
Of those sixteen, what was the percentage of turnout of those sixteen homeowners?
I think we had three or four on that segment.
So, three out of sixteen, all three of them said they'd rather not have a sidewalk if they didn't currently have one?
Correct. I think there was some discussion by each one of the staff members with that. And it started out with kind of an indifferent, saw the benefits and some of the negatives. But then, when we talked about the property owner on the corner, on the far west corner, on the north side, that was the, they were there, I think, representing their grandfather, I believe, if I'm recalling this correctly. And when we explained, well, we'd have to put a retaining wall to get the topography to work, they kind of said, oh, well, that's too impactful for us. If you put it in, keep it away from the north side. So, unfortunately, the guys that had, would have the tree lost, didn't show up. So, moving that sidewalk to the south side and talk, we weren't able to get comments from those folks. The person I talked to was actually indifferent, but putting his house on the market. So, didn't really have a horse in the race and said, it's fine the way it is. So, you know, everyone has their own little story, but essentially, there wasn't any strong support. It was more, it's, I'm okay, once I consider the impacts with how it is out there currently.
One point to Councilmember Brox's statement or comment about safety would be, Forest is the, or excuse me, A Street is the closest north street for kids crossing to the pool. Maple is a location in which kids would cross, there's a crossing there. I think, not knowing it's rhetorical, you can't tell me how many kids in these neighborhoods are using, you know, Seventh, Eighth, you know, Sixth, Seventh, Eighth Street to get to the pool. But I think I would agree and err on the side of caution that having a sidewalk feature in a neighborhood like this, and that is also a street that does cut through over to Maple to get you to fifty-five. So, anybody who drives the city streets around here, you can't get through coming in on Ninth. You can't, you know, you have to go down through Seventh or through Eighth, excuse me, to get through. So, just keeping that in mind, I would be a little bit concerned more that, especially during football time, people are using A Street to get across, to get back out on Maple to get to fifty-five. So, just something, I mean, that we could, you know, have an impact now and not have to worry about it down the road. So, thanks, Ryan, I appreciate your time.
Counsel, shortly we'll take a motion, put this before us. I'll accept the motion right now. Councilmember Balsanik makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Okay, now we have the motion before the body. Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Ryan, between Forest and Maple, we've got an alley going between Seventh and Eighth, and it just goes partially through. Does that alley stop there? Or does it continue on?
Correct, it stopped, I believe the right-of-way is even vacated from that portion to the west. So, those are just backyards abutting each other.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Brian, I had a question about trees, and so maybe it would be more appropriate for Chris, but it's kind of a combination. I was wondering, what is the impact of mature trees when we leave them in the right-of-way and then they die? How does that impact the sidewalk in the street around it? Is it very disruptive when the root systems come up and things like that? Or does it, I'm just, I'm curious, what's the impact to the sidewalk? And then, who's responsible for maintenance of the sidewalk if it is disruptive?
If a tree simply dies in place, that's going to be well-known and seen. So, the removal of that can happen systematically where the tree comes down in pieces, and there's very little disruption to the ground. And then, that stump can be ground out. So, there's very little impact there. If a tree topples over in a windstorm and the whole root system comes up, then everything's out the window on that. But, yeah, if there's a publicly-owned tree in a right-of-way, I'm going to assume that if we damage city property with that, that we would, I don't know, if the city is on the hook for that repair, or if we would work with a homeowner on that? The latter, okay. Sure, sure. Does that help?
So, sort of, kind of, so I ask, I brought this up last year about the impact that Emerald Ashbore is going to have on the boulevard trees that are in this area. And so, I just pulled up the DNR's website where they're tracking, where EAB has been identified within our city, and it's creeping up Tyler. And so, it's about ten blocks away from this area, not even. And so, that was late last summer, fall, who knows when DNR last updated that? And so, it's going to start moving exponentially. And so, I was wondering, you had mentioned that you were going to discuss diseased trees. And so, I'm assuming that these trees haven't been diseased enough that they're going to be identifiable in the spring, correct? Because you have to have the canopy to be able to see that there's lack of leaves at the top, you know? So, I was just wondering, are you going to take that extra step to at least talk to those property owners so that they're aware that they have an ash and that the impacts that it's going to have in the very near future?
Yeah, we'll absolutely have some information from the city forester and forestry department to go with Public Works and communicate with property owners there. And you can identify Emerald Ashbore a couple of different ways. One, through canopy loss, and two, through wintertime observations. You can use binoculars to look into the tree and see if you find any bark that's falling off and those sorts of things. So, that's another way that they can help identify if a tree is infested. And thanks for leading me into this. It's, you know, as we did last year in 2017, we worked with Rainbow Tree Care to provide, and not to exceed price for property owners here in Hastings to take advantage of. It's six dollars and seventy-five cents per diameter inch of tree. Property owners were able to take advantage of that kind of bulk pricing, if you will. We're doing the same thing in 2018, and we're expecting those proposals back here the first of March. So, we'll know what that price is for 2018. Many property owners in Hastings took advantage of that last year. Over one hundred and thirty-nine individual properties had trees treated, with over four hundred trees treated. And by all indications, that's a very good response. So, anything we can do to get the word out to the rest of our Hastings residents, if you have an ash tree on your property, whether it's private property or in the boulevard, the city right-of-way, take advantage of that, get that treated. And it's a very cost-effective way to maintain all those benefits from those mature trees.
Wonderful, okay, thanks, Chris.
Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, now, that brings up a question. You said, Ryan, you had said, in terms of the difficulty with a sidewalk in that area along Eighth because of trees, do we know, do we know what the, you know, what the tree is? Is it an ash, maple, whatever? And then, Chris, do we know if any of those trees have been treated, if they're ash trees?
I'll say that we do have a tree inventory. We didn't go into that level of detail of looking at the actual tree species. So, I don't know that, I just know they were mature and large diameter trees that, some of them would need to go.
I can look at addresses for those private residences that did treat. But any company that treats a tree for Emerald Ashbore, they hang a little tag on it, and it has the year and usually the letter's EAB. You can see one out here in the southeast corner of City Hall's parking lot here. There's a silver tag on that one that was treated this year by our staff. So, that's a, and the companies that we work with, they're required to do that. So, you can do a visual drive-by and see if there's tags on trees, so you can see those.
Well, just, and I don't know if this is pie in the sky or not, but if they haven't, if they are ash trees, and if they haven't been treated, and if a sidewalk would fit in if we removed those trees, I don't know, I don't know if that's a good idea or not. I know we're talking about retaining walls as well and topography, so it can get kind of complicated. I guess, at best, because I know we're going to vote on this thing without, you know, specifically talking about each tree, but we do have onsite determinations that are made throughout the project. And so, I guess what I'm asking is a real close sensitivity and observation as to whether or not these trees are being maintained, if they are ash trees. And if they're not, perhaps, you know, as Councilmember Foltz had stated last year, it might be best to just go in and let's take them down, and then we'll start all over again. Whether, I'm assuming we could do an onsite decision in, you know, at some point in the project.
Yeah, and each of the trees in the project area will be visited by the city forester prior to the project kickoff. So, we'll be doing some communication through there. If there's something that is noticed, if that tree is at risk or needs substantial pruning or shows signs of any sort of infestation or any sort of issues, we're going to talk to those property owners right then.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
Counsel, just to reiterate, we have the motion before us, okay? It's been moved and seconded, it's the project. The project that is before us does not include the sidewalk, okay? Just to make that clear, okay? Also, Counsel, when we do vote on this, by charter requirements, we have to pass this by six out of seven votes. Okay, so we'll need six out of seven votes, city-initiated project.
Councilmember Liefeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. Procedural question, so do we have to vote on the motion on the floor before an amendment is taken into consideration?
The motion is before the body, so you may offer an amendment at any time.
I would like to offer an amendment to the motion that's on the floor, that we approve the neighborhood infrastructure improvements as noted with the amendment of the addition to the sidewalks for the two-block span on A Street at either the north or south side of the street.
Okay, so that's from A Street, on A Street from Forest to Maple?
That's correct.
And one side? Did you have a preference, south, north, or?
We'll let the engineers figure that out.
Okay, on one side? Okay, Counsel, we have an amendment to the motion. It's a Liefeld amendment. The amendment is to put a sidewalk on A Street. That would go from Forest to Maple, one side. Left for staff to determine what side it would be on. That is the amendment before us, discussion to the amendment. Oh, I needed a second on that amendment, is there a second to that amendment? Seconded by Councilmember Lund. We have that motion for amendment before us, discussion to the amendment. Councilmember Vaughn?
I can't support that because we don't know what are the costs. We can't just say, let's do this, without having a number in front of them. So, I can't support that, I don't think that's a great amendment at this late in the game after we've already went through the public process of trying to get input on should we put a sidewalk in or not. So, I would not support that unless I see numbers in front of us.
Councilmember Lund?
I guess I would agree, I mean, we're under the impression that it's not necessarily significant cost in every situation, is that correct? We're talking maybe for that retaining wall, there's some additional cost, but from what I recollect in our committee meetings, it's not necessarily an exorbitant amount of money to add a sidewalk where it's not currently, as long as we're already doing a massive project and tearing everything up. But I hear what you're saying. I don't want to necessarily move something along that, you know, it's a two-million-dollar rock that we have to move or something in order for it to happen. So, I retract my second on that. I'd like to, I don't know, I guess procedurally, again, I don't know how we can go about this at this stage.
Well, the motion's been made, you'd like to withdraw your second?
Yes.
All, okay. Second is withdrawn, we have a motion before the body, is there a second to that motion?
Councilmember Foltz?
Your Honor, may I ask a question in regards to assessments? Because I agree with Councilmember
Councilmember, can I wait till I figure out this amendment first?
Oh, sure, because I was going to give a second.
Okay, then can I have it now?
Oh, but I wasn't, can I ask my question? It was just procedurally about how, if we did put in the sidewalk, and, because I would feel awful not having the residents given, be given the opportunity to, if it was going to affect them financially, you know, the twenty cents that they set on the dollar that they have to pay for, and if they had to pay for something that they weren't aware of. So, I was just wondering, is there any way that we can pass that amendment? And then, whatever that, you know, that marginal amount of sidewalk that would, that cost, that would be the city's cost, and then it wouldn't be a part of the assessment? I'm just
You know, that would probably be part of the overall cost, and it's estimated, we're just guessing, right around thirty to forty thousand.
So, would that additional sidewalk piece, though, would that be assessed to the individual property owners? Or no, it's just kind of blanket?
It's spread across the whole project.
Okay, there we go, all right, that's what I'm looking for.
Is there a second to the Liefeld amendment?
Then I would second.
Okay, you have a second. Okay, the motion is before the, the amendment is before the body.
Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. With regard to Councilmember Vaughn's concern, we're really not, we really don't have the financials in front of us. I mean, we've got the approximates of the eighty cents versus twenty cents. But we're not going to see the actual assessments until we get to another hearing, right?
That is the total project cost, but we will see the assessment presentation on March fifth.
Yeah. And, you know, and again, it's being put out on bid. It could be that the bids are going to come in under what, you know, the engineering and public works departments have figured. So, it could be a very affordable thing. I appreciate the amendment. I see where you're coming from with it, and I'm probably going to support it. But I also think that, having seen other street improvement projects in the past, we had one in 2008, before I was on the council, where I actually asked the mayor to come out and take a look at
I remember that day.
Two pieces of property. And the question was retaining wall on Spring Street and a retaining wall, I believe it was Ninth Street. And we did have Public Works there, you know, when the mayor came. I was there, the property owners And we, we did have public works there, you know, when, when the mayor came. I was there, the property owners were there. And, you know, there, there was agreement on that. And, and this is what I mean by, you know, an in-the-field decision. Because this could be done with regard to what Councilmember Lund is asking. Okay, well, we don't know what it's going to cost, but every project that I've seen in terms of our street improvement projects have had wiggle room to them. It, it's kind of a, call it, I don't know what, if we actually call it something, a contingency fund. Where you say, well, we know that it's not going to come right down to the dollar and cent. And you get out there, I mean, it's just like if you start digging and you pull up, you know, you want to pull up the sewer line, water line or whatever, and holy cow. You, you got a boulder that's, you know, 80 feet across and, you know, 20 feet deep. Well, now what do you do? Well, we've got some wiggle room to take care of that if, if that is your concern along the way. And kind of gets back to what Councilmember Vaughn was asking. Do we know the cost? No, not really. I mean, we do know, we do, do know that sidewalks do cost a certain amount. Historically, we can kind of count on that. We do know that retaining walls cost a certain amount based on, on history, depending on if they're a foot high or two feet high, three feet high, whatever, if they taper up and down and so forth. And, you know, looking at that project in 2008, where I asked the mayor to come out and, and we had the property owners right there. And a decision was made and everybody was pretty happy about it in, in terms of how it was going to be handled. So it's, it's not, I, I don't think it's a make or break issue. I, I can support the amendment and vote for it. I could also support the motion, the main motion, without the amendment, assuming that we could have, you know, an infield decision-making process that would take a look at that with, with our city forester, with our Parks Department Director and with Public Works as well. So I'm happy with either one and I think either one will work.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm, I'm close to, let's call the question here pretty soon because I'm not interested, Councilmember Balsanik, and wiggle room is not a good word for me when we're talking about people's cost, what it's going to cost them and what's going to cost the city. This process, and I'm about process, and I think we went through a process to get where we're at today. We've given the residents a chance to talk about this. I'm not really interested in changing it at this meeting. Now, you can, if, if we reject this and go back and get some good input, good, good data, because I really don't want to get in the slope of taking out trees because we already made a decision as a council, we're not doing that, we're treating trees. So that's, these are all the curveballs. I'm not really interested at the very end. So I would ask that we call the question on this one and move on.
Before I accept that motion to call the question, I just want to make, chime in as well and suggest, I'm, I'm with you, Councilmember. More than the cost, I think the cost can be absorbed in there. But what I'm concerned about is that we came here tonight with a project that has been vetted through the neighborhood. And the neighborhood has agreed by and large that the project is needed and is good and they had an opportunity to comment on sidewalks. Those comments were taken. And I, I feel very uncomfortable if we would move forward tonight with a sidewalk plan that was not agreed to the neighborhood. And that's my view. Okay, is there any final, Councilmember Liefeld?
Your Honor, to your point, the sidewalk option, I don't believe was really given to them when we're talking 16 homeowners, three of which appeared to have attended and seemed indifferent. I don't believe that they were given necessarily the full scope of what it is we may be able to offer them. So based on Councilmember Vaughn's discussion, my point to my amendment is just, I do not want to vote for something that will not include a sidewalk, period. How, how do I, do I need to change my amendment? Do I amend an amendment? If it means that we do more vetting, then so be it. But my concern, and I guess this is procedural, if we were to vote on the initial motion, does that then mean there would never be an opportunity for us to bring this forward to discuss the sidewalk at a further?
Let me ask a question to Nick. Have we ever done a project where we moved to it and came back and did something different? I don't recall such a precedent. The problem is, is that we're about ready to go out to RFP. We want to bid this. And so this is a major part in structure that would be part of any bid project. And I, I think that's the complication. Nick?
Thanks, Your Honor. Nothing's jumping out to me right off the top of my head. I think that'd be a significant procedural step that would have to be taken to bring a specific project feature back after the grand scope were approved. Just planning out in my head here, if we were to go to some kind of infield decision, I'm not comfortable with that at all as a staff, saying it's going to go on the north or the south side. That, to be frank, is, that's a voting matter. That's got to have the entire body.
And there should not be.
Rule on that. Staff shouldn't be, you know, we can make proposals and such, but we should not be deciding which side a sidewalk should go on.
I agree. So just to be clear, we have an amendment before the body to amend the main motion to put a sidewalk on A Street from Forest to Maple that, you know, that will be, you know, one, one sidewalk, not both, not both sides. Councilmember Balsanik?
Okay, I'll ask one more question, Your Honor. If a sidewalk were to go in the area in question, do we know which side it would go on then?
Well, I think.
Or what would be your recommendation?
What we looked at preliminarily was if it went on the north side, the grades change significantly as you get down to Maple Street. So that property on the north side of A Street at Eighth and Maple would have a retaining wall, two, three plus feet in height along almost the entire frontage of that property. That is just not a favorable situation to leave a property owner in. And so as we discussed that with representatives for that property, they kind of understood the impacts and weren't as in favor of a sidewalk at that point. So then we looked at the south side and that's where we have some mature trees that we didn't think we could move. Now, we didn't draw the designs up in CAD and compare exactly if we could make it work. It looked pretty, we were pretty sure we were going to lose significant trees, which is a driving goal of, of the project design. So we had two conflicting, different conflicting issues on either side. And I don't necessarily recommend bringing it down one side and then crossing it at a certain location on the other side. So we kind of stopped the analysis there after we went, discussed this and then went to the public and didn't get a strong push for sidewalk connectivity in this location.
Yeah, and I, and, and I did have discussions with the property owners. We're talking Walnut and, Walnut and Ninth, or excuse me, Walnut and Eighth. And, and the children. So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm pretty well aware of, of that situation. Okay, well, that answers my question. Thank you. That's, and I'm done.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well, your second ward, Councilmember, I want you to weigh in on this. Councilmember Fults.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a procedural question because if you bid this out and the base bid package was as is and then you could do an alternate where you could look at doing the north or the south or both sides of that sidewalk. So like alternate one could be north side of the sidewalk, alternate two could be south side of the sidewalk. And then you could put it out for bid that way. And then that would give you enough time to do analysis over the next few months with regard to the residents to see, get to get further feedback about how they feel about it. Because if you're not intending to get your bids back, what did you say, until May or something like that? Did you have in your timeline? I can't remember. So when you're. March, so that's, oh, so there's going to be a fast turnaround since only like two months. I was just going to suggest it because that gives you a little extra wiggle room to do that kind of analysis. And then you could, and the council could decide upon whether or not they wanted to choose one of the alternates later.
Time is important because it's such a big project. There's a lot of streets to do. I, I would hope that council that, I, I think that the, those who want to extend its sidewalk, I think your goal is worthy. I, I, I understand your point. There's no question about that. But I think, you know, this issue has been vetted to the neighborhood, whether, you know, some responded, some didn't. But I think we have to take a collective wisdom that today there is not a sidewalk there and the property owners there are pretty much happy with it. And to force a, and let's face it, it'll probably have to go on the north side and probably be on the property with the, because we're probably not going to want the mature trees taken down. So I think you probably want to, off the top of my head, want to go with the property where you're going to have a retained wall along that whole property at three to four feet. And I, I'm not willing to do that once they had a chance to weigh in on it. And they came away, we have before us tonight a project that does not include it. And I'm not going to put that in their project. So, but I think the question was called. Councilmember Brox?
I agree with you and I think as far as public engagement goes, there was 30% of the households that showed up to the meeting. That's a pretty significant amount of public engagement. I wouldn't say that that's low considering the size of the neighborhood. So I want to respect the, the paychecks and the pocketbooks of the residents and also their input and feedback. And so I will not be voting for this amendment.
Okay, I think we're, I think, I think we're becoming well-informed, council, as I, you're probably waiting for me to say that. So therefore, we're going to take a roll call on this vote. Clerk will take the roll.
Revon?
Quick clarification, Your Honor. We're voting on the motion.
This is the motion on the amendment. This is on the Liefeld amendment.
And that's a simple majority?
That's a simple majority on the Liefeld, on the Liefeld amendment.
No.
Councilmember Fults?
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanik?
No.
Councilmember Liefeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Lund?
No.
Councilmember Brox?
No.
Mayor Hicks?
No. The amendment does not prevail. Now we're to the main motion. Further discussion on the main motion before the body. Any further discussion on the main motion? Councilmember Balsanik?
Well, I, thank you, Your Honor. You would ask, Nick, if we ever had an infield, you know, in the field, excuse me, not an infield, but an in-the-field decision. And we did. The one that I just brought up where I had asked the mayor to come to the two property owners in question as to whether or not there would be retaining walls. And we did, we did that at any rate. At least that's my understanding. And I, you know, and I don't want to nitpick or anything, but I think we, I think there, there is, and I hate the word wiggle room too. But when you're out there in, in the field, there are going to be times when an alternate plan may have to, you know, come, come into being. So for whatever that's worth, with, with all due respect. And, you know, and I, I do want to say as well that I, I know that staff has done a very detailed analysis on, you know, what, what we should do. And I really do appreciate the recommendation with regard to the trees on one side, retaining walls on the other side and so forth. You've been out there in the field, you know, you've checked everything out, you know, you, you've looked at the elevations. And I, I think there has to be a great amount of respect for the recommendation that's coming before us. Thank you.
Okay, there's no further discussion. We have the main motion before the body. I will caution council that we need six out of seven votes to pass. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. One nay has been recorded. The motion prevails. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing in relation to a vacation of easement at North Frontage Road, McShane Development. John, we got to you. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm just going to pull up a map of what we're looking at today. We've got a couple of actions related to property in the, in the general vicinity of Pleasant Drive and North Frontage Road. This is property that we own. The first action that we have before us tonight is a vacation of easement request, which involves this property here, which is dashed. Now, North Frontage Road, this easement was put on the property and cumbered in 1973, back before this area was platted. It was a way to describe the, the right-of-way for the future. Since that time, the, the property has been platted, the right-of-way has been defined, the road's been constructed. So during the course of the transfer of this property, the developer, McShane, has asked to vacate the underlying easement on this. What does that mean? What it means is that the, the easement would disappear, but the public right-of-way would not. So the road that you see there, there would be no changes to that. It would still be public right-of-way. It's just, there's an underlying easement that in a sense is a duality that's no longer needed. And so that's what we're asking for tonight. So we did have a action at the last council meeting to order the public hearing. We have sent out public notification. Have not heard any comment back from this. This is something that staff does support. And we ask for your support on this as well tonight. This is a public hearing, so you can hold that at this time or I could stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for that presentation. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anyone here who'd like to speak to the vacation easement at North Frontage Road, McShane Development? Anyone here to speak to that on the vacation of easement? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, let's go to that order of business. What's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn?
So moved.
Makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Balsanik. That motion is now before the body. Discussion to that motion. Councilmember Brox?
So, John, just so I'm clear, basically this easement was there to preserve, the road wasn't built yet. So it was there to make sure that when there was a road built there, that, that easement was preserved, but it's no longer necessary because there's a road there. Is that fair?
That's essentially the sense of it. The, the easement was taken before the property was, was platted on there. And then the plat established the right-of-way.
Perfect. So it's basically, it's double, it's doubling down on something not needed. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was in terms I understood.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further discussion? We have a motion before the body? Seeing none, all, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, next we'll go to Public Works, the 2018 Mill and Overlay Program. John, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Give me a second here. Okay. As you know, Ramsey Street and Tyler Street from Third to Tenth Street is proposed to be Mill and Overlay this coming summer. Another major rehab project won't be proposed again for another 15 to 25 years. Staff is looking for a direction from council on whether to reinstall the one-way or to convert over to a two-way. On January 29th, city staff received a recommendation from the city's Ops Committee to convert over to a two-way. We reached out to the residents. We held a open house on January 18th. We also, in addition, mailed a survey out to the residents, contacted the schools in the area, that being Sees and also Kennedy. And then also contacted police, fire and consulted with in-house here in Public Works. The results showed a slight tip towards maintaining the one, the one-way street. Seeing the pie chart up there, 29 were in favor of the one-way, 20 were in favor of the two-way, with one being indifferent. This feedback came from about 50% of the affected properties out on the project. Common themes that came back. For the one-way, the folks thought that going to a two-way would increase the average daily traffic, not only in front of their house, but then be problematic.
um, not only in front of their house, but then be problematic for Sees during the school, um, drop-off times. They also thought the, the two-way would be, uh, less safe, given that now two lanes would be utilized, not just driving down one-way on one lane, but also utilizing two lanes of traffic, um, especially when their kids be playing near the front yard, it'd be closer to the traffic. Uh, third, uh, theme that we heard was, uh, history, it works, why change it? And a fourth is, um, backing out of the driveway could potentially be, um, more difficult, given traffic again being on two lanes. Um, the folks that supported the two-way, um, they viewed, um, a one-way as unsafe based on people regularly driving down the wrong way. A second, um, they viewed actually, a two-way might actually slow traffic, given that it'd be a tighter corridor. When this corridor gets tighter, folks usually drive slower than faster. Um, the third was improved access to homes, they would no longer have to drive around the block to get into their driveway, they would have access from either direction. And then, fourth, um, traffic, uh, sort of trash carts, uh, could be placed on their side of the street as opposed to dragging it to the other side. One last common theme that we heard from both sides, whether they're for a one-way or a two-way, um, was that vehicles do travel down the wrong way on a regular basis, despite all the traffic control signage that we see up on the screen there with, uh, the one-way signs and the, um, begin-one-way signs. So, in summary, city, uh, city staff received strong articulate opinions for both sides, um, the findings were presented to the Ops Committee. Um, the consensus of the committee, uh, was to rec, uh, consensus of the committee was to, uh, go to a two-way. Um, their rationale included safety, um, resident feedback suggests the vehicles regularly driving down the wrong way, um, converting to a two-way mitigates this traffic hazard. The second would be purpose, there really is not a definitive purpose for a one-way that we can nail down at this time. It got changed over pretty much before all of our time here at Hastings. The third is driveway access, um, converting to a two-way provides improved access, um, to residential driveways. A driver backing out from their driveway needs to look left and right either way. A fourth is pedestrians, pedestrians, young and old, need to look left and right regardless if it's a one-way or two-way, so in a way it's safer. Because now they're, a kid would be taught to look both ways, if they're taught to only look one-way in a one-way setting, they couldn't miss the car that's coming down their own way. Um, fifth is garbage, as I mentioned before, the garbage carts are, um, could be placed on their side of, of the street. The sixth is traffic, uh, operations, um, the travel pattern for street sweeping and snow removal operations are better suited for a two-way. Speed limit. Um, the twenty sixteen traffic study documents current speeds generally conform to the posted speed limit. Um, converting to a two-way from a one-way are often cited as ways to reduce speeds, not increase speeds. Um, the cost, there really isn't a huge cost difference, the cost would be, um, replacement of signs to switch over to a two-way. Um, and in long-term, you would have fewer signs to maintain, so the cost would go down, so you'd pay a little bit more upfront, save in the long-term. Parking, um, there really isn't a change with parking, you just change the direction you would come and park, so the number of stalls would not be affected. And then, opportunity, um, we're, again, we're here with the Mill and Overlay, we won't be back for twenty, twenty-five years, so here's the opportunity to, to make the decision and live with it for an extended period. Also, with this recommendation, um, the following were discussed to mitigate any problems, um, during the changeover. First would be signage, um, both temporary and permanent. First would be the temporary with the visible sign, uh, temporary signage will be needed to be installed to alert drivers and develop, uh, new driving routines, an adjustment period is to be expected. Um, the second is the permanent with the, uh, permanent traffic control signs, so taking down the one-way is installing, uh, whatever signs is not necessary for the two-way. Um, and third is public outreach, so to reach out to the community, uh, mail letters out to the affected residents, but then also hit the Facebook, um, newsletters and all the other social medias to get the word out that this has changed. Fourth, average daily traffic. Traffic will normalize within reason, um, the average daily traffic counts is fifteen hundred on Ramsey Street, twelve hundred on Tyler. It would be a really good idea, pre-project, to take traffic counts, and then after the project, to take traffic counts to see truly how things will shake out. And then, timeline. Um, today, we're here to hopefully, um, approve the council plan and then get direction to submit the plans to state aid. Um, that would happen by the end of the month, hopefully as soon as the end of this week. And then, um, April second, the city council will approve the plans and authorize, um, advertisement of bids, and then the bid opening will be the end of April. And then, a word of contract, the second council meeting in May, and then construction being, um, June eleventh through August twenty-fourth. Project would be three to four weeks, um, but not during River Town days, which is a key point, not during the parade that cuts through the corridor. With that, I'll ask back for questions.
Thank you, John, uh, appreciate your presentation. Uh, as I understand it, tonight, we're going to approve the project, so you can take it to MinDOT, right?
Yep.
But before we do that, we have to make a decision what we're gonna do with the one-way versus two-way.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, council, we can take a motion right now, and then, if there's anyone who wants, the, the recommendation to take it before the body right now is the two-way, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so what we can do is, uh, we could take that motion, uh, the two-way would be what's before us, and then we can have a discussion on that, and if we feel like there needs to be a change, we need an amendment on the one-way option, okay? So, if I can have a, a motion to approve, Councilmember Leifeld makes a motion, uh, to move it forward, seconded by Councilmember, I don't think you, uh, uh, I'll, I'll second it, so the, so the body, now, the, the motion is before, oh, Councilmember Balsanic, you made that motion? Okay, now the motion is before the body, thank you, okay, so now we have before us the project, uh, which right now, uh, suggests that, uh, recommends that it goes to the two-way option. So, let's take it up for discussion, Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, your honor, John, could you go back to the, one of the first slides, our link is broke on this one? It's on the survey, that one, I think. Talk about down the middle here, we got fifty, so fifty percent of the neighborhood gave us approximate feedback, correct? Is that all we read?
Correct, yep.
And twenty-nine are saying leave it as it is.
Correct.
That's why I couldn't second that survey, or second that motion, because it's that difficult, the decision, I've, I've reached out to people that live on it, and they're saying leave it alone, and I just don't see enough reason to change it, there just wasn't enough meat there for me, so.
That sounds like an amendment to me, councilmember.
I'll listen to everybody, I gotta get some input.
Okay. You'll hold judgment. Uh, councilmember from the first ward, councilmember Fulch?
Thank you, your honor, um, yes, I have a number of questions, and first of all, I'd just like to state that this is actually the very first time I've been given the ability to, um, learn about the project and actually give input. I wasn't provided notice of the open house, and I wasn't provided notice of the operations committee when they were gonna hear it and that it was being, um, discussed, and so I would, um, like to put that on the back burner for further conversation in the future about how we can improve our processes to make sure that councilmembers are fully informed about projects that are within their ward. And so, um, I, too, was, uh, wondering about the questionnaires, when I was looking at the table that we were provided, um, of respondents, what was interesting is, is that it says that there was forty-nine responses that were received, but then when you look on the side that said that they were, um, in favor, there were, um, actually seventeen respondents. And then on the side that you look at that they thought that the two-way was a good idea, there were ten respondents. And so, um, so seventeen plus ten is twenty-seven, and so that's twenty-seven of the forty-nine. And so, I was wondering, um, like, how did we come up with, uh, additional responses? Like, how did we solicit those, because I know, like, Sees I saw gave a response, and, um, Mr. Regan from the bus company, but I, I was just curious, where are the remainder of those respondents?
It's a very good question, um, the survey, we took the feedback even past the posting date, so the information you're looking at is, was updated, was from the initial feedback that we gave the council, and then feedback continually, continually came in, so we received phone calls, we, um, received more surveys, passed the date, so that all got updated, updated is now in this slide right here. Uh, what you have right there was what was current at the operation committee meeting, to which, apologize that that information did not get to you, I know, um, this was sent out to the council group, so if you were omitted off that, I apologize in, in the beginning.
Um, the council received, uh, the minutes, or a notice after the email said, we had a, we had a open house meeting last night, and then what the results were, but I couldn't find any notice beforehand, and when I had asked, um, the city administrator, she said that a hard copy had been provided, but I'm not sure how it was provided, because we weren't receiving packets any longer in January. So, so it's just something to please, you know, be aware of in the future when you have projects like this, that the, whoever's representing the ward knows about it, and then furthermore, I mean, the at-large members should know as well, because they represent everyone, so, um.
Uh, councilmember, I'll just interject and say something, because that's a somewhat of a serious charge. I was notified with the, uh, stuff I got on my desk about the meeting of the neighborhood meeting that was coming up, and afterwards, and I knew about the committee meeting that was gonna be on it, so I don't know why, how you didn't get that information.
I don't know how, what I was supposed to have done.
But, uh, I know, Councilmember Vaughn, did you get that information? I, I got that information as well, councilmember, anybody else not get that information? Okay, I'm, I'm just surprised to hear that, because you're saying that you didn't get it, and I'm trying to figure out why, but, uh, I know I got it, and I know several councilmembers did, so we'll have to go from there.
Okay. And so, furthermore, I had a, had a conversation with my predecessor, Tony Alangi, because he actually lives on the roadway, he lives on Ramsey Street, and so I wanted to, um, have a better understanding of what his thoughts were, because he, you know, had a long representation, um, of the ward, and he said that he actually didn't receive the, he didn't receive the notice of the open house or the, um, surveys either. And so, um, I'm a little concerned that, um, representation of the ward wasn't given an opportunity really to have input. But, um, I'm furthermore, I'd like to say that I think that, um, we should leave it as is. I thought that there was a lot of comments about, um, safety concerns, in particular around, uh, Sees, that block, that area, Sees strongly, um, rejected having it, um, made into a two-way because they were afraid of their busing, how the kids are gonna get dropped off, and there's plenty of residents that had also made that concern. And so, I think, um, I think in respect to, you know, putting the kids first, I thi, I, I don't think that there's really, um, something's broken there. Um, when I was door-knocking that area, what I had heard concerns most about was this concept of, you know, folks kinda drag racing down the strip. And I know that you did a traffic study, and you found that people were pretty much adhering to the, to the speed limits, which I believe, because most people, you know, are aware. But it was interesting when you had conversations, folks felt that, um, sometimes they saw, they thought maybe that there was a lot of traffic that was going down to the island, that they were cutting through those back roads, and, um, and they were concerned, because I saw plenty of those cars just zip by when I was, um, door-knocking in that area. And so, I think that, um, traffic calming is in order, um, just to try to get some of those outliers under control. And so, um, I'm not sure if you took into consideration, like, putting out bumpouts, because as you had indicated in the maps, there were, um, parking on the west side of the street, and so if there was like a little bumpout, you know, to protect that area that was, where the parking was, that that might have a calming effect with not having to put in more stop signs. And so, um, I don't know if you took that in consideration, and I don't have any, you know, idea what that means to your project, if it totally derails it, and, um, and I know that you wanna put it out for a bit, but it was just something else that we could be, that we could do, rather than changing it from a one-way to a two-way.
Good question, um, currently, no, that has not been looked at. So, if that is the wish of the council, then we can look into something like that, uh, but currently, no, it has not been looked into.
May there be further discussion of the motion, uh, Councilmember Balsanic?
Thank you, your honor. Uh, as, as chair of the operations committee of the council, uh, when we discussed this at our committee meeting, the question that kept coming up, that we couldn't find an answer for is, is why was this ever created? To have the one-way streets? There, there was no reason for it. And they, they are the only, I believe, the only two one-way streets in the city. So, it does kinda beg the question, you know, is this appropriate, given the, the total, uh, view of all of our city streets? I'm having great difficulty with this machine trying to get to, um, the agenda item in detail, and I've been trying here for fifteen minutes while we've been carrying on this discussion, so I'm gonna have to rely on it, and the same thing is happening over here with our city clerk, so I don't know if there's, I, I don't know what's going on. But, uh, I, you know, my recollection, and, and Councilmember Leifield might, uh, offer any other comments along with it, is that there was no overriding reason to have them be one-way streets. Nobody, uh, staff had looked back to see, you know, what the original reason for it was, and could not find any answer to it. So, that was one reason why the committee voted in favor of returning the streets to two-way traffic. Now, the other reason, uh, that I felt was really important is that of the comments that we got from the residents on those streets, there was a, there was a continual current of comment that there were many, many vehicles going the wrong way on the street, which I find to be dangerous, and so did the committee. And, uh, so for those two reasons, and I think there was another one, but again, I can't access this, and perhaps, uh, Councilmember Leifield might, uh, might be able to add to it, but, uh, it was just the feeling that, oh, it was the cost, I'm, I'm sorry, yes, because if we, if we don't change it now, as John had said in his presentation, I, we're talking twenty-five years, uh, before we might want to consider changing it to two-way again, or, or leaving it, you know, one-way again. We got a lot of striping involved, we've got signage involved, uh, and, and so forth. And, and, uh, the streets are wide enough to accommodate two-way traffic with the current parking conditions that we have in place. And so, it begs the question, you know, why not? Why not do it? And so, the committee voted unanimously to, uh, to go with the two-way, uh, configuration. Thank you.
Your honor, I just wanna clarify, that was a two-to-one vote on the committee for the vote on that, is that correct? Is that correct?
I, I think it was a consensus vote.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, maybe it was. In my old age, I can't remember that much. And again, I can't get this machine to operate, so I'll, I'll have to take your word for it, but it was the consensus vote, and it was a staff recommendation that we go, that was the fourth reason. There we go. It was the staff recommendation to go back to a two-way configuration.
Counselor Vaughn?
I have a question about the state aid part of this. So does applying for state aid mean that that will change the type of traffic that is on this street? Or is what, because I know that Spire Boulevard is a state aid road, and also that allows certain hauling of trucks and other equipment, is that true here?
For the, for the scope of tonight, state aid has nothing to do with the one-way or two-way.
Okay.
It's just the funding source to do the mill and overlay.
Gotcha.
So, yeah.
Okay, so then, my other question is, other than being sort of emotionally attached to Ramsey Street, 'cause I had to take my driver's license test down there, and I turned the correct way, I got a ninety-four percent, so I did pretty good. But I guess my question is, is that C's isn't opposed to it. Public safety tends to favor not changing the road, so I guess I'm hesitating on what the clear measurable benefit is to changing the road with those entities being opposed. And I guess I haven't heard a real solid benefit to changing it, other than, you know, it might make it safer, but changing traffic patterns and changing the way that the school and the buses and people are moving that they're familiar with. Now, I'm not in the camp of, this is the way it's always been, so we should leave it that way. But I also wanna say that if we're gonna change it, if we're gonna make a significant change, I'd really like to see more data on what the measurable benefit is, and I guess for me, I just don't see that here. So my tendency would be to vote against changing it to a two-way and, and maintain it as a one-way. And I know that there's been a lot of work from the committee and staff that has gone into this, but it seems so close, and when it's so close to me, especially with C's and fire and police, I just, I have a hard time changing it up and spending the money to do that when there isn't a real good measurable benefit.
Counselor Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. So the million-dollar question as to why this happened, to begin with, I have it on strong authority, that I didn't speak with retired Superintendent Ken McCray myself, but he tells the story that it was absolutely the result of the busing to the junior high, which was located where Green Mill and the Premier Bank Building are. So it was originally changed, because we have one gentleman, I think he's lived here for fifty-two years, if I read the information right, and when he got here, it was two ways, and he wants it back. So, that's just one person's opinion, but fifty-two years ago, it was a two-way traffic. If I'm doing my math right, it appears that it runs from Sixth to Tenth Street, so it's about six blocks long. It's two blocks, Fourth to Tenth, excuse me, six blocks long, two blocks, and we do now have Bailey is a one-way due to the bike trail system that was put in, so that is now a one-way. But in the rest of the city, it's certainly not part of the charm of our community. We're not a city of, you know, historic one-way streets. So listening to the information of long-term plowing purposes, long-term signage, looking at the immediate safety of the obvious amount of traffic that is going the wrong direction, you know, I think we can be very thankful that the speed limits are so slow, because we hear about, you know, high-speed I-94 traffic on the wrong side of the road, and terrible accidents happening, so thank goodness people are obeying the speed limit to a degree, it sounds like. So I think when I was sitting in on this, listening to, again, the long-term costs that could come into play, going back to the aesthetics of the community and the confusion, I too passed my driver's test on those one-ways. They are no longer a factor for the driver's exam station. They now hold their tests up near Westview Center, up by the mall, so that's no longer an impact. They don't take their drivers down to those one-ways, so parents, don't worry, you'll have to teach your children how to do that yourselves. So that's why I would supported it originally, and why I would continue to support it now. We are not gonna get another opportunity in twenty-five years, and if we continue to see, you know, this influx of people driving the wrong direction, I don't see why we wouldn't wanna curb that right now. Thank you, Your Honor.
Counselor Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, so we, we've heard a lot about going the wrong way on the one-way, and it's been an established road for fifty-some years. Imagine what's gonna happen if we change it to a two-way, and people that have been here fifty-two years are, you know, just muscle memory, are gonna be going the wrong way. So no matter what happens here, if it goes one-way or, or two-way, I, I wanna, I wanna find a way that we can better communicate a change or a non-change, so that this isn't an issue. Because if the overriding reason is people are driving down the wrong way on this current one-way, and that's why we're changing it, then maybe we need to do a better job of signage. And it's an easy fix there, but if we do, as a body, decide to make this a two-way, I, I would hope that we're, we're over-educating and over, you know, flashing signs and, you know, people dancing signs or something like that, I don't know. So it's very obvious during this time that, that it's, there's a change, because I can see it's actually gonna be more dangerous as people become more, become accustomed to that change.
Yeah, I'll weigh in and suggest that I agree with Counselor Member Vaughn's analysis. I'm glad that we're taking a look at it, and I understand why the two-way concept is being discussed. But, you know, if we did take a vote, we got fifty percent of the people responding to that, with a solid majority, not overwhelming majority, but a solid majority saying that, you know what, I've lived here, I like it, I don't really wanna change it. You know, I'm, I'm persuaded by that argument. I think the fact that the school takes up a large block, about six blocks, and what they need to accommodate their needs, I think that's an important factor here, versus if that was all residential. And so I, I'm inclined to go with keeping the way it is, in my estimation. But if we're going to do that, I guess I'll have to offer a Hicks amendment. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer amendment to the motion, and that would go with the one-way option to keep the streets as they are. I'll seek a second for that. Second by Counselor Vaughn. We're on the Hicks amendment, Hicks amendment, to put it on one-way. Is there any further discussion about that? Counselor Vaughn will say?
I was busy being confused by this thing. Did you mention, John, that our, our garbage trucks are having to go down those streets the wrong way in order to pick up the, the garbage?
No, the carts would need to be going on the underside. That's, that's the point that I mentioned. The street sweeping operation, though, would be going down the wrong way.
Okay. Okay.
I'll say too that I did, I was contacted by a few residents who were concerned about going on a two-way street, so I was contacted by some residents. Okay, no more discussion on the amendment, this is a vote on the amendment for one-way. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. We have the motion before us to approve the project's goal plans to be submitted for state aid approval, the twenty-eight key deal and overlay program on the one-way. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, next we'll vote the community development. Number two, resolution, preliminary, final class, Whispering, Aspen addition. John?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna call up the presentation here. This is the same area we were speaking of earlier, where we were, let's see, it looks like, there it is, which we were looking at the city-owned property on Highway Fifty-Five and Pleasant Drive, which is here. The action we have before us tonight is a site plan and preliminary final plat for the property. It's city-owned, point-six-five acres. The plat itself would be to plat this as a single lot of record, very simple plat, and then the development for the site plan would be to construct a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot medical office building on the site. The project is being brought forward by McShane Development. Both of these actions were heard before the planning commission at the February thirteenth meeting. The planning commission did recommend approval of both actions at that meeting, bringing that forward to you tonight. We did send public hearing notice out on this project as part of the planning commission meeting, and we have not heard much comment from that up to this point from the public. So let's take a look at what we have here. Let's see, that. So this is the site right now. The plat itself, very simple, no, no roadways, no park dedication, very simple on that, very, very limited recommendations on it, as far as conditions. This is where the site would be, thirty-five-hundred medical office building here, parking surrounding the building, as you see. One of the items of discussion for the planning commission was the number of parking spaces that were being proposed. There's twenty-nine spaces proposed for this project. Under our parking code, we had looked at this as being close to an office-type of complex, which would have a lower parking need of twelve parking spaces. After further consultation with the developer and understanding their needs, we were supportive of the proposed for the number of parking spaces on site. We do understand that within our parking code, there is some ability for when things are not specifically identified, that we have some opportunity to be able to interpret what those parking agreements or parking numbers should be. We usually do that with consultation with the applicant, so this is a similar consultation we had with the Illini Clinic, if you do recall on that one. So we are moving forward with the recommendation on the number of parking spaces on the site itself. Taking a look at how the site's accessed, the access would come off of North Frontage Road, there would be no access to Highway Fifty-Five or Pleasant Drive here. And so we are supportive of the project. This is the landscape plan, this is what it would look like here. It does meet our architectural standards for the project as well, should be a nice addition to the city. So we are recommending approval of this, as well as the planning commission. We do have two separate actions for you tonight, one, the preliminary and the final plat of Whispering, Aspen addition, and the second being the site plan for the thirty-five-hundred square foot medical office building. And I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for that presentation. Counselor decided, Mr. Forrest, motion rich. Counselor Vaughn makes a motion to approve, seconded by Counselor Vaughn will say. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next we have a resolution.
Thank you. Next we have a resolution, a site plan for the medical office building, fourteen-sixty-five North Frontage Road, site plan. And it's on here, John? Okay. And the, the site plan here for the development is as shown here, and I can stand for any questions on that. Okay. Counsel, the site plan's before us, what's your wish? Counselor Vaughn makes a motion to approve, seconded by Counselor Lyfield. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next we have a variance request at Forty-Six Jefferson Court, side yard setback, John? Yeah, thank you very much. Forty-Six Jefferson Court is shown here, owned by Stephen Smith. This is the proposal that he's looking at, the building itself, he's looking at an eleven-by-twenty-three square foot, eleven-by-twenty-three foot, excuse me, addition to a garage to add a third stall. You can see this little tiny corner over here does encroach within the seven-foot side yard setback by about one and a half feet. So the variance is requested to the side yard setback requirement. We did have the planning commission look at this at the February twentieth meeting. They did recommend approval on unanimous vote at that time, and citing hardships that are located within the resolution itself, that there's practical difficulties in complying with the regulations, and the circumstances relating to these difficulties have not been created by the landowner, and it will not fundamentally change the character of the neighborhood. I think the rationale is primarily based upon just the small area here that is being encroached upon, and the lack of a precedent that would be set by that type of addition. And so we are moving forward with that recommendation for approval. Just to caution the vote here, a seventy-five percent majority vote, or six of seven council numbers, is needed for action on this. So I can stand for any questions. Thank you. Thank you, John, and underscore that one more time. Counsel, six out of seven votes is needed to approve. Okay? Is there any discussion? This item is before us. Counselor Vaughn makes a motion to approve?
Discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Vaughn. Okay, Counselor Vaughn?
There was no... There was no complaints from the neighbors, is that correct?
That's correct.
They were given notice and no issues whatsoever?
That is correct. We, we did provide notice to the adjoining property owners on the site. Okay. Any further discussion to the motion? Counselor Vaughn?
Is, is there going to be a garage door, then, off of this unit, or is it just an addition to the garage?
Counselor, member, it would be an addition to the garage. The driveway itself is located here off the main garage. The garage door would be in this location tying into the driveway.
I'm sorry, do that again?
Sure, the, the garage door would be located here tying into the proposed driveway at this location.
So are they intending to expand the driveway in front of that addition?
I don't believe so, other than, this is a better view of the property here, other than paving an area that would taper back to the garage, there is a width requirement of how wide a driveway can be at the right-of-way line.
Okay, are they required to put a driveway in if there's, if there is an overhead door?
I don't know if there is necessarily a requirement on that, but if they are, if they're creating a driveway to the building, there's a hard surface requirement, so it's kind of a chicken and an egg, I guess, thing. Steve, are you planning to put a driveway in there?
I am.
Okay.
An apron.
An apron that goes in there. So would it be a connection into the driveway, or just an apron?
It would be just a gradual taper off, circle away, but it's a tough decision.
Okay, so it would basically kinda taper into the driveway, something like this?
Yeah, and several of the apron houses have that same situation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, because the, the overhead plan wasn't showing that, so that, that's fine, that's fine. I, but just another question, we've got the water valve right in the middle of that driveway, then, off the apron?
Okay. And that, towards the right-of-way?
Well, it says water valve. Is that the water shut-off for the property there?
Oh, right here? Yeah, yeah, that'd be the water shut-off for the property, I'd imagine, Nick? Okay.
Just be, be careful.
So I don't think that would be affected through this action.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, counsel, any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, and next we have a final plat before us tonight, and a Wall and Seventeenth addition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor of City Council members. We're looking at a three-lot subdivision for Wall and Seventeenth addition, as shown on the map here. This would be located in the southwest of Greystone Road and Fallbrook Drive, and this is consistent with the Wall and Master Development Agreement. Now, a little bit of history on the project, in two thousand and two, the city council negotiated a developed, master development agreement with Wall and Development, that essentially put together the entire preliminary plat for the, for the area, including all the undeveloped lots, and there was an agreement that all fees would be paid, all the design work would be done, the only remaining items to be brought forward would be to physically plat the property. And so what we're coming back before you tonight is the final plat of a section of that. Now, looking at the master development agreement, what we look at is, does the subdivision match the plan and the preliminary plat that was established in two thousand and two? In this location, it, it does. You can see here, this is the two thousand and two plat on the left, this is the two thousand and eighteen final plat on the right. So all dimensions, sizes are consistent with that. That being said, the planning commission reviewed this at their last meeting, recommending approval of it. Staff recommends approval as well, and I can stand for any questions. Okay, thank you. Counsel, what's your wish? Counselor Vaughn makes a motion, seconded by Counselor Vaughn. That motion is now before the body. Is there further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, next we have an item brought forward by our counsel, Dan, can you speak to it?
Thank you, Your Honor, and City Council. You're asked to initiate a vacation of an alley and order a public hearing for that action. As part of the development, redevelopment of the Hudson Manufacturing Property and plating of that property, which is pending a closing, it was discovered that an alley that runs within the... It was discovered that an alley that runs within the property, a very small segment of it, approximately ten by twenty feet, was never vacated historically. So something that was news to all of us, and I think to anybody who's dealt with the property in the past. So as a result of that, in order to convey good title from Hedra to, uh, Confluence Development, we're asking that the council take action to vacate this very small portion of the alley right-of-way so that it can be conveyed to Confluence and we can complete the closing. Uh, I can certainly stand for any questions. It'd be a simple va, uh, vacation of an alleyway. Uh, this would come back before the city council at the March nineteenth meeting, because we need enough time for published notice.
Okay. Okay, council, what's your wish? Councilmember Lund makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Fult. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Uh, comments from the audience? Is there any comments tonight from the audience? Any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, council announcements? Any announcements? Councilmember Fult?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, this last week, on February thirteenth, there was a MINDOT open house on, uh, Highway Three-S sixteen. If folks didn't get a chance to attend, it was really well-done. I thought, thank you to the Public Works Department and, uh, MINDOT engineers who were present. I think there was over a hundred folks that actually turned out, which was tremendous. Um, I would encourage folks who are residents within that area to actually look at the MINDOT website to, uh, learn more about it. They actually do have a cool feature on their website where, um, residents can leave comments on there. Um, and so if you go to the MINDOT we, website, which is mindot.gov, and then put in metro backslash projects backslash W, I'm sorry, H-W-Y three-sixteen, it'll come up. I'm sure if you just Googled MINDOT and then Highway Three-S sixteen, it would probably bring you there. Um, and I want to encourage folks to put in their concerns about, um, safety. It's particularly looking at, um, from the Civic Arena down to, uh, Tuttle Drive. And, uh, there's, and I was really so pleased to talk to the engineers, because they said that they are already hoping to put in a trail system along there so that, um, kiddos and bicyclists and such can, um, get through that area safely. Um, I was a little concerned, though, to find out that they don't have funding currently available within their budget to do anything, um, in regards to major intersection improvements, such as like putting in a, a, a roundabout, like at Tuttle Drive. And so, um, I was just hoping that if ma, maybe more residents actually left comments, that they were concerned as well. Perhaps we could, um, generate a little action and, um, getting that, that budget increased. And so, so that's it for now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, council member. Is there any, any other announcements? Anybody looking forward to going home? Councilmember Bosanik?
Do you have the planning committee meeting for six o'clock next, uh, it's the first?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, six P.M., and I assume we're meeting at Public Works for that?
We're meeting here.
Oh, here, okay. I'm looking at the wrong person, excuse me. Okay. Six P.M. on Thursday, the first.
Okay, council, I have a few announcements. First of all, I want to start out with the, uh, Councilmember Fult, you had indicated that you didn't get, I think it's really unfortunate that you didn't get the information. Uh, I've looked through my notes and my emails, and I see that on February third, we've got a, uh, a, a copy at our council meeting of the whole process with the timeline on it. It talked about the, uh, you know, January eighteenth open house, and then it talked about, uh, uh, later on, the council committee was gonna meet on that. So I don't know exactly what happened with your papers that night. Um, going through my emails, there, I got an email on here on January, or, yeah, January nineteenth, talking about that meeting that you indicated. And then the email talks about the timeline there and that, uh, there was gonna be a council committee meeting on, on January twenty-ninth. So that's in my email. So, uh, I feel, I, you know, it's unfortunate that you didn't somehow see that information.
I did not see that information, and I actually went back and I tried to call on all those emails asking, and I had asked the city administrator earlier this afternoon if I was given any notice, and she said that we were given paper copy.
Well, we were given paper copies of the January third meeting with the whole di, timeline on it, and then there was a follow-up email that also indicated the council committee that was on there, and that's what I have.
So it was in the council packet?
No, no, uh, there were, when we came here on our meeting on January third, there was a, there was a piece of paper on our desk at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh.
That gave all the information on this whole process.
Okay. Well, then it just became a collection of all my other papers that I brought.
Right, right, yep, exactly. So it's probably in that group of paper, but then there was a, an email sent on the, the day after the open house saying that's why, oh, here's what we had at the open house. And then we got, and the email indicated the council committee meeting was gonna be on January twenty-ninth. And so there was a notification there.
Of the operations committee that was gonna hear it?
Yeah, right. So I don't know how that got through, but I, I, I understand your concern as a firstborn council member, but the information that I have is that it was out there, so, um...
Okay, well, I apologize if I missed it, but it would have been nice if, um, because that was the first packet where we were going digital, and I, and some of us couldn't log on the night before, so I had to print things the day up and bring it all.
Paper on the third.
Right, yeah, exactly. And so I didn't see it, and, um, and I did my best to try to find an email that indicated where it would have been, that we would have received a notice of it, and so...
Right, and I just want to make it clear, because I just want...
No, I appreciate that.
Don't leave the impression there was no information.
It would have been, um, I would just encourage someone from the engineer's office to just reach out and give a heads up, because we do get a lot of information, and then somehow I totally missed that we were having an open house on it.
I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll make a deal with you. I think that's a point well-taken, if we make sure that we read all our emails and look at all our papers.
I know, we get a lot.
We, we have, uh, you know, we have a responsibility to. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Bosanik?
Well, if I can just make a comment about that, and, and I had talked to Councilmember Fult about this, uh, uh, earlier today. I, I, I know in my years, uh, sometimes things get lost in cyberspace. And, uh, uh, there, there was a time, and, and we did get it corrected, where, you know, things were being sent out to city council group, uh, which, uh, which did not get to me. And, uh, after working with the city administrator, uh, in I.T., we were able to kind of merge all of that stuff. Uh, there was kind of like a little black hole there. So I think from time to time, we may not get all of the information, but, uh, I, I, I think the intent is that we try to get all the information out to everyone. And, uh, uh, if, if we don't, um, I think the thing to do is just, you know, mention that, and, uh, we'll see what we can do to, you know, to correct that, uh, in the future. By the way, this thing is now working.
Okay, good, good. Mine's been working all night, that's the first time I ever had a tablet, so...
I don't know, okay.
So I, I consider it a real success at this point.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I actually turned the page, oh. Okay, uh, let's go to, uh, announcements. On Monday, February twenty-sixth, uh, at seven P.M., the planning commission will be meeting. On Thursday, March first, twenty-eighteen, at six P.M., council member, as you indicated, a planning committee of the council will be meeting to talk about the Wallen Development, and that'll be here at City Hall, and that's at six P.M. On Thursday, March first, as well, at seven P.M., will be the Comprehensive Plan Committee meeting, uh, on that same night at seven P.M. And on Monday, March fifth, uh, at five-thirty, we'll have a city council workshop, uh, in regards to Councilmember Fult's comments. It'll be on the MINDOTS three-sixteen project, so make sure you bring more of that information along there, council member. And, uh, so we'll be in a workshop on the MINDOT three-sixteen project. And at, uh, seven o'clock later that evening on Monday, March fifth, city council will be meeting again. We have no other business before us. Well, I, I take that back, Councilmember Liefeld. Don't apologize, it's important.
Sorry, Your Honor, I was leaving the thunder for you. I want to remind everybody who's listening that this Saturday at the high school, there will be an event.
Thank you.
Um, building bridges in Hastings are black history. Um, you may have, some of you may have heard, um, Rich Menke came before us, and we gave our, um, uh, he gave us a presentation a few weeks back, so I highly encourage everyone to attend on Saturday if at all avail, available. Um, it's going to be some amazing information about your community.
Yeah, I'm very much looking forward to that.
And that starts at two o'clock.
Goes two to four on Saturday afternoon. Building bridges, it's gonna be a great program. Okay, uh, no other businesses before the body. A motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Vaughn makes that motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Liefeld. That is a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.